We have live. Recusal item, that one item on the agenda. During the, um, I think it's just during the actual.
Yeah, we are, and I think, um.
Meeting, not work session.
Well, you're right, but at the same time, I don't think we've got to dig down in the weeds in it. There's definitely some gaps and some holes there, and it's gonna take some time.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the public.
Yeah, yeah, the public meeting.
The small.
Yeah, it's item B in the work session, so when that comes out, I'll go in the back.
Right, right.
Is that what you were asking me about? Oh, okay. That, I'm not gonna be in here for this conversation because that actually is a piece of property that I'm helping to sell.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, for sure.
Period. And so, um.
Yeah, well.
We're keeping ourselves to where we're at. What were you asking me about?
Yeah, all right, good to meet you. Yes, sir.
Good. Tyler, how are you?
I'm well, how are you doing?
Good to see you, good to have you with us. Appreciate it.
Mr. Burr, how are you?
How you doing?
Good to see you.
Good to see.
You're holding the show up.
Oh, well, I have a book here, man, I had to change my schedule, I was just like, wind.
Oh, yeah.
I have my stuff, make sure the rain, mist, and dust gets starting going. Hey, how you doing? Good to see you. Good evening, at this time, we're going to, uh, call the Edgefield County Planning Commission work session to order for April the fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. And, uh, this time, we'll call it to order, going to have agenda before us. Remember, this is a work session, we made no motions, that's all, we're just work session, discussion. We have no guest speakers. Our third item on the, on the agenda is old business. Rezoner application for rural, valid issue, our, our industrial development. ID parcel, ID one four five zero 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 zero. And six three, six four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, and eighty-nine, which is on Rainbow Falls Road, uh, William Ellis and Southern Felt Company. John Lewis, the president of Southern Felt Company, here to join the planning commission during the work session, and John, you here? I'm gonna call it up to the table here. Okay, uh, this is not something new to, we've got to be beforehand on this, and, uh, I know in the commission, I have any further question, discussion on it, and, uh, we have some comments from staff on this as well. At this time, uh, you have any, uh, new comment for us?
No, none at all, we, we are, um, in the process of acquiring the, the six parcels for Mr. Ellis. The title search is complete, and we should be closing on that property within the next, uh, next week, I've been told by an attorney.
I think, uh, if you, coming from the staff, you wanna address it, let me address, you wanna address this, uh, Kevin, what we discussed, right?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, um, one thing that's an important aspect to this rezoning application is that the comprehensive plan identifies industrial zoning is not appropriate within this land use area. Um, as you'll see in your memorandum, we note that, we also note that planning commission action is to, as follows, follow public hearing, the planning commission shall evaluate the proposed amendment relative to the following. Uh, one, how it relates to and affects the comprehensive plan. Two, changes in conditions since the adoption of the plan or ordinance. Three, the need to correct an error or deficiency in the ordinance or the plan. Four, any benefits which would be derived from the amendment. Five, the relationship of the proposed amendment to surrounding land uses. Uh, the commission shall forward its recommendation for either denial or approval by the county council for final action. Uh, staff is of the opinion that, uh, line three is relevant here. When the comprehensive plan land use map was put together, I believe due to the isolated, isolated nature of Southern Felt, it was not seen as an industrial area. Granted, that business has been there for over thirty years, correct?
Yes, thirty-three years, nineteen eighty-seven.
So I, I believe that would have been a failure on the part of just us putting together the comprehensive plan to not notice that. Um, as such, if the planning commission is to recommend the rezoning to county council, it would make sense to also recommend that they amend the comprehensive plan land use map to show these properties, uh, as being, I believe we identified it as the, uh, light industrial, uh, land use. One thing that's important to note is that staff also recommends that the application is only for the new parcels that they are acquiring. If you feel it's appropriate to rezone it, you might as well just go ahead and rezone all of the properties, um, that are, uh, belonging to Southern Felt. And staff does request that if possible, the, uh, that Southern Felt combine, um, the parcels into a singular property.
Uh, Mr. Lewis, is that your plan to, to combine the properties, I mean, is there?
Yeah, once we, once we purchase that, we will, um, get it resurated and, and, um, combine all parcels. The, the long-term plan is to, um, expand with about eighty thousand square foot building and create another dozen or so jobs in the next year, year and a half.
I don't.
I have no further questions.
No further, you have any?
No, sir.
You have any time, you have any, you on this?
Oh.
I think, I think we've been discussing it, and we, what, looked at it in deep to see exactly what we have, and we, uh, they got a decision at the, uh, meeting, now regular meeting tonight, okay? You have any more, any time, yes, sir?
No, sir.
Okay, well, we appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, free time.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item of business is, uh, is new business. Subdivision, okay, application from Holler Oak, parcel ID one seven six, double out, double out, zero eighteen, triple out, on Sunny Brook Road and Sabre Lane by JSMG Development LLC. Gary Twitpin, the development with JSMG Development LLC, and Philip Green, the project PE with Southern Partners. Are they here, to join us?
I'm Gary.
You're here, okay, you, uh, Philip.
Hey, Ben.
You, Gary, okay, okay. And, uh, at this time, we, uh, in fact, this the one, this the one Aiken, the Edgefield County, right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the property is divided by the county.
So, how far you are on, uh, with it so far on Aiken County, have you made application to them, or what, have you done, uh?
I've had preliminaries, uh, Aiken County, they, they like the concept, they'll approve as is, we're starting with Aceville, they will, the process is a little bit different than using Aceville County, just, it's more involved, so we'll start here.
Any comments from staff?
The only comment staff would have would be that we recommend if the planning commission's approved it, it'd be approved on the condition that it's also approved in Aiken County.
Have, uh, the lot sizes that we looked at beforehand about the same size, you, uh, you know, we were talking about the lot size.
It looks like they've got an average lot size of about a half an acre, is that correct? And that, from what I remember from the last meeting, that's all septic tanks, y'all planning to use septic tanks out there, correct?
Septic tanks.
That's a lot.
And well, and well, too, right? There's a lot of way.
Has there been any, uh, front end determination if that's gonna be possible or not through DHEC? And through just kind of water capacity of the, of the land for well?
DHEC, DHEC will come out once we initial plan, open up new site surveys, but basically, it's all basically once over there, we don't see that's gonna get problems. Also, the wells, um, most are sand wells over there, but if we can't get a part more, I'll just, we'll, we'll, get that water from there for basic property.
Is there any water available close to this property?
Uh, have you put in any subdivision with a lot of well in it before? You know, it's, it's, have you done a subdivision similar to the, with, uh, wells, every lot, one well each lot?
The subdivision that you and I met in, they were in, um, Twin Lakes subdivision, airport, all fourteen of those were on wells.
On wells, right.
That was, that was fourteen houses.
Fourteen houses, right.
When you got, how many houses in this, how many houses, seventy-nine lots?
Okay, and then Ansley, and I, Ansley behind there was the same, and then Twin Lakes is also, um, divided with all of those on parallel.
Is it Edgefield or Aiken County?
What, do you know the average well depth over there? Uh, and, and the one you, we looking at now to propose, do you know that, in that neighborhood, what the average well depth, do you have an idea? We're proposing, right?
I don't have that.
You have no idea? Uh, what, what you have, oh, that, uh, of between Lake there, what the average well depth over there?
Those are there, they're one point sixty and eighty feet.
Okay, all right, I'm, I'm, I'm pinning on here, you know, when you dig a lot of wells, when you dig well, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but when you dig wells, the deeper well draws from the upper veins. And when you got, if you got well on the average, if all of them average a hundred feet, you're average, and all of them average within a hundred feet range, you got no problem. But if one well come in, he dropped one fifty or one seventy-five, he pulled from the, the surrounding rank and dropped the other well down. And so, I've been, I've been in the business all my life, you know, well, deal with well, and I'm a perfecting plumber, and that's the problem that we ran into that, you got a lot of them somehow to dig a deeper well. You gotta control, in fact, what you can't control because the well digger doesn't know how deep you gotta go till you strike a vein. But veins are, just like veins, I buy that running water, you know, runs in, and once you get a deeper vein, it sucked the other one down, water go to the lower point. And I don't know what the average, your water table in that area right now, that area, but I know where they are, some part of other counties. This is why I'm questioning all this. Anybody else?
Do we have, um, I guess, do we have other subdivisions that have a lot of wells like that?
Uh, we do, the development that the same party presented, um, last time is all wells.
What part of the county, where was it, Kevin?
Uh, that is off of Woodward Lake Road.
Okay.
And are all those houses in place now, and filled with families living in there, all using water at the same time?
They are.
They are?
I mean, nothing against it, um, I just, from a resourceful, I'm, you know, kind of a tree hugger when it comes to that kind of stuff, and, and, um, if it's up to me, um, we're just discussing here, but, um, you know, I would say a subdivision, if it's labeled a subdivision, major or minor, um, I probably wouldn't. And I know we talked about earlier, and there'd be some problems making this happen, but I would rather those areas only be considered if there was, uh, infrastructure that was close by that could be tapped. Um, I, when I campaigned for council in oh-eight, and I went out to West Side, everybody out there is like, when's water coming, when's water coming? Of course, we know the financial on that, you know, we're looking at nine million only to serve so many houses, and it was a million to the first house, um, yada, yada. And, uh, so these people are starving for water out there, and, um, you know, it, I just would think it'd be a large draw on the water table. So, you know, in the future, I would like it to become some sort of priority, and I'm trying to eyeball all the key people in here, um, to find a way that we could do that. Like I said, no offense or anything, it's what it is, but, um, you know, I, for a subdivision, for every house to be tapping that water table for me is, is a big deal.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, uh, there's nothing that prevents the planning commission from drafting new ordinances to recommend to county council. Um, obviously, we're in the middle of the LMO process, but the current ordinances could be updated, or ordinance could be written that, you know, possibly did something in that nature, obviously, we wanna speak with the county attorney and figure out what the county legally can do, and, you know, something that's not gonna be challenged. But that said, it's certainly something that the commission and staff, um, under the guidance of the commission could look into.
Yeah, and I'd submit to the chairman, if, you know, that was a priority for you in any way, I think it is for a lot of people in here, uh, that we task whoever would do that, and I'm not the guy, because it's gonna look terrible in ordinance.
Cause see, the thing is, that water table, instead of dropping, the water table dropping, and, uh, the water table had dropped, in the average, in that area down there, I remember when the water table was ten feet. I remember we have a ten feet now, and see now, the well that I've been going and check, them, the well that have it sixty and seventy feet, a lot of them are going out. I was over in Aiken County a lot not long ago, and people having problem with water, and what we determined is the water table is gone. See, the up, up in the north side, the water table at one time was twenty feet at one time, and now we down to a hundred, about, how fast it dropping? And when it drops, that's it.
Yeah, I think thirty years from now, it's gonna be developed enough that people opt out to get on the city.
They're gonna have to get on, so we need to look at that long range, right?
Right.
This is just information, and, uh, you need to look in the disc, we hate to put them subdivision there, and you get all of them sold, and everybody got water problem a lot at once, and, you know.
Didn't want to define it as a party foul or anything, but, you know, I mean, like I said, it is what it is, so.
Okay, any more?
I, for one, would like to see bigger lots, I mean, I, I think that's something that, that we've been pretty clear about, uh, up here, unless it's a conservation subdivision, which I don't believe this is, um, I think seventy-nine small lots like this, um, all, all well and septic is just a bad idea.
I agree, I think it just creates, uh, kind of a upcoming issue, that it may not happen year one, but it's, you know, when homeowners don't have water, there's a, there's a problem, especially when it's gonna cost several million dollars to probably get a water line there. Just from a development standpoint, I think it creates a pretty decent hurdle to kind of think about, so. Again, it may pass, you know, the mustard when it comes to current ordinances and things like that, but it's fairly intense for having wells set to things, just be careful.
Any, any more coming?
I think the people without water would be a little more tougher than the LMO people, maybe.
Yeah, it, it's tougher without water, see, I, like I said, I'm a plumber, I know I've been plumbing all my life, and, uh, people calling, you got water problem, and there's no water in the well, and nothing we can do about it. Or they turn out you're bad.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have recused myself from this item, so I'm gonna step out.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, um, just for the sake of everyone here, Mr. Presley has already submitted his recusal for this item.
Okay, all right, our next item is, uh, plan development application for Harriet Place. Part of ID one six three, double out, double out, double out one, triple out, Edgefield Road, and William Road by Conwell and Company Incorporated. Lamar Con, Conwell, the CEO of Keystone Home and David Bankster, project PE with Southern Partners, here to join the planning commission during this work session here. And this is down off of twenty-five South, off of Four Lane, that path, uh, Best Academy, uh, Road on the, uh, left. That's the William Road, if I'm correct, right? Okay, we, now, let's see, this is, uh, you have a proposal you wanna give to us, sir?
Yes, sir, Mark Roll here, uh, President Keystone, Mark Gillum here is, uh, distributed a, uh, presentation we'd like to run through, kind of give you the background of what it is we're doing.
No, I'm sorry, flip back there just for a second. All right, economic impact, we think we're gonna be spending about eight and a half million dollars on the infrastructure and the land purchase. And we'll yield, uh, two hundred and two homes at an average of about two hundred and forty thousand dollars, although with the way prices are going, it might be a good bit more by the time we get it built. And, uh, basically come up to about fifty million dollars in, in homes on, on this piece of property. That does not include the, the commercial, I think there's one point six acres of commercial on the, on this property as well. So, we've got a variety of products that we wanna build there, different, different, uh, home site sizes, and different home styles and types as well. Probably see better on, on your, uh, book than there, but, but these, these homes are anywhere from fourteen hundred, uh, square feet to about three thousand square feet. And they are, uh, the detached homes are, uh, three bedrooms to five bedrooms, from two to three, three, three and a half baths. We're building a, a neighborhood just about, probably a half mile as crow flies, called Copperfield, uh, a little bit closer to Edgefield. This is on the North Augusta side of Best Academy Road, and Copperfield is about a half mile farther toward, uh, the city of Edgefield. And it'll be a very similar product to that.
We did not develop Copperfield, but we are doing construction, we've heard construction plans. Uh, we've got a variety of lot size, three different lot sizes, really trying to hit three different, uh, mix of house plans. We have a lot of demand for single stories, you know, single stories have become a luxury product, uh, as costs go up. Uh, so we're building more two stories now, so they fit a little bit smaller lot, which probably have a variety of sizes. Just the overall layout. This is another neighborhood in, uh, Edgefield County, it's actually in the city of North Augusta, it's called Gregory Landing, it's off Gregory Lake Road, which is pretty close to Martin Town Road. And that's just some, uh, drone shots that we took, it's been a very successful neighborhood, and we think the product we'll put, the product we're putting in Copperfield is very similar to this, and so that, that it'll, we think it'll be successful. Uh, one of the things I didn't mention was in seven months, in Copperfield, we sold twenty-eight homes, which is, uh, we consider that very successful. We didn't build this. We'd have loved, we'd have loved to own that, just an example, yeah. Can we answer any questions, provide anything else?
Trying to, uh, see, I know, I know we have water there, I know we have water there, uh, you got, so, that, that force, that's, you gotta put, that force system?
That is correct.
So, okay. Uh, lift that, lift this right here. How much space there are you anticipating, I'm trying to look here, on the road front of there, for twenty-five, right there, that fronted space in, that green space right, look at the, uh, at your exhibit three. Yes, sir, right, okay. Yeah, right, how mu, how much space of that in there, right?
David, where's, where's our engineer?
Yeah, I'm David, but, um, there's gonna be a power line even in that area, but there's also gonna be a forty-foot group, I believe it's forty feet, or maybe, you know, not exactly sure, one of those, but it's, but there's gonna be trees left along that road to, to separate the, you know, the. Town, that's the townhome portion of the project. And then there will be a, a, I can't remember the doctor, the line, that, that, it's not showing on the drawing that I have, um, but I believe it's forty feet. So, power lining, which is currently kind of.
Right, right.
Diagonal through the property, we'll have to reroute that, parallel, but I will, we've already contacted the co-op about doing that, they said that, but, of course, they're gonna pay for it, it, it's gonna be a, a, a.
Oh, you talking to the paying for it? You talk, oh, you gonna pay for it? Oh, you're doing better than I am, okay. Uh, cause see, what I like, I like subdivision, like, I always like that buffer, when you're going down the road, you don't look and see all these highway unless you're just skimming through the trees, you know? You know, you, if I like, uh, down on, uh, what do you mean, North Bell Air, you been on North Bell Air? And all in there, how you got that buffer in there, and that's where you got, go off, and then, you know, I can live with that, that's not too bad, right? Okay, I'm finished, you got anything? Anybody got another question?
Looks like you're planning to leave about twenty acres, it says, for green space, is that correct?
Correct, uh, it basically, little, the piece across, the buffer across the front, some of the sides, and the rear of the property, we're planning on walking trail mixed in there as well. The terrain is a little bit rugged in there, so we'll have to kind of route that carefully, uh, but it's a pretty good chunk of land in the back.
We also have, uh, also have parking.
I see that, you've got a playground over here.
Yeah, and, and my favorite, the dog park.
I, I see that, yep. How, how big are those two, how big's the playground, how big's the dog park?
Um, I think it was forty feet, it's four lot, we had four lots in there.
Okay.
We lost four lots in time, and it's probably, it's probably right at an acre each.
Okay, an acre each.
The dog park has become a hot item, it's west. Place looks all around.
Okay, uh, one more question, you finished?
I'm finished.
Uh, right there, where Academy Street come in, is that gonna be a proposal entrance right there on the left, or it gonna be on William Road? Uh, it, what the deal here? I know that commercial lot in the corner right there, and Academy Street coming in, you know, you know, it doesn't, cause William Road is down, is slightly down the road from it. They're not across from each other, and I, I see you got it drawn in there, is that gonna be a entrance right there?
There it is.
Is that gonna be the entrance right?
Into the main subdivision, the entrance will not be Williams Road, it's lined up.
Oh, Academy Street?
Correct.
Oh, okay, right, okay. Cause I believe now, it is a crossover there, isn't it? On the four lane, I'm trying to remember, I can't, is the one already there, I don't know.
Unless I'm mistaken, there is.
I believe it is somewhere that neighborhood.
Yeah, we've already spoke DOT, and they, they, they prefer these locations, um, the main entrance will be across from Academy, we will have to put in a D cell lane, um, and they've given me the specs on it, we'll also have the other one, other driveway lineup for that other intersection.
Right.
That, um, they're gonna try, DOT told us that we would tie to it, and they would re-strike that, that they're, they'll probably come and talk to the county about how they want that.
Right.
When they go four-way stop, or, cause right now, it's kind of a really hairpin turn, but they said they would handle reworking that, so that's what I was told by the district.
Okay.
DOT is asking that you put a D cell lane in? Did DOT make any mention about stoplights or anything like that at this location?
Kevin, should we talk about the staff recommendations, or where we stand on that, or is that something?
Yes, sir, I think we could, if, if the commission wants to discuss those, so in your memo, you have.
Go ahead and mention that, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, in the memo, you have several staff recommendations, um, for, I, I think it'd be most time efficient to maybe first bring the ones where there's disagreement and discuss those, and, and then we can go over the ones where there's no contention over between the applicant and staff.
Okay, all right, the, the trees, I, I think it was specified to have a sixteen-foot tree, and we'd prefer to have a caliper. Uh, most of the places we're building in and developing in have caliper, like a two-inch caliper tree, six, sixteen, sixteen-foot, I haven't seen us put any sixteen-foot tree, that might be a four-inch tree, which is gonna be hard to find and hard to maintain during the development period as well, so, uh, that's, we don't, we don't oppose trees at all, but just, we just don't wanna have to get a sixteen-foot tree.
If, if you have an encanter before a caliper, I believe they come up four feet off the ground and measure the, uh, size of the trunk at that point. And the majority of trees we put in, uh, in most jurisdictions are, are two-inch, there've been some one, and you can occasionally find a four-inch tree in the marketplace. Uh, the bigger they are, of course, the more costly they are, but also the harder to plant, the harder to maintain until they kind of get reviewed and go.
I spoke to Doc earlier today, he's out sick unfortunately, but this is one of the recommendations that he wanted to include, and he's stated to me that a three-inch caliper, um, was the intent, uh, that he was, he, he imagined that that would result in a sixteen-foot tree.
Okay, now, caliber, that's the name of the tree? Oh, okay, that's what got me, that's the distance you wanted to, okay, now, what type tree do you prefer, I know, I've noticed some, you know, you got different type, and some of their tie-in almost like a fence, you know?
We, we typically like put in, uh, red maples, or, uh, a type of an oak that's pretty hardy and grows reasonably quick, the red maple also really pretty in the fall.
Right.
Uh, what was the, Willow, the Willow Oaks, what was the other one we?
They grow fa, for an oak, they grow real fast.
I like that about your fast growing oak, it is a Willow Oak.
And it seems to be pretty hardy.
But a lot of it depends on availability, too, cause, you know, when you start specifying exactly what tree it is, it sometimes gets more difficult to find those trees. I know in some places, when we should do business, they, they wanna specify a specific, that's a very specific type, and that, uh, that's not always possible to do.
Yes, okay, you add, uh, any more, any time?
Mr. Chairman, I believe there were more staff recommendations that the applicants, uh, were not in agreement. were not in agreement with that we could go through.
Well, the other thing was fiber cement front and, and we, in Copperfield, we're all vinyl, okay? And Gregory Landing in Edgefield County, we're all vinyl. And, and just down the road on Best Academy in Aiken County at Sage Creek, there's probably a thousand homes in there that are all vinyl, no, no fiber cement front. And we'd, we'd prefer on a competitive basis, it puts us at, it cost us a good bit more on, on building these, these homes with fiber cement and it puts us at a competitive disadvantage. And you can do, you can argue that one looks better than the other, but they both have to be pressure washed. But fiber cement, for some folks, they gotta paint it every once in a while and that can be a pretty big expense after they've moved in, especially if they choose a dark, darker color. So we'd, we'd rather have the opportunity just to build vinyl. If the customer wants, they can choose and we'll put fiber cement on. And I built a lot of homes, Lamar and I built a lot of homes, I've never had somebody that say, no, I want my house to be fiber cement. I know some folks like it. It looks, you know, you can argue about what it looks, that's in the eyes of the beholder, but customers don't demand it. Or if they demand it, we put it up.
So other way, you, this, okay, that's, I disagree with, you know, I don't want now, just a question. Are you getting good service out of vinyl? I know that's the thing going, that's going, that's going. And I understand this and, you know, being, familiar with most of the name building. Uh, do you think that gonna be the long-term, they gonna come up with something different from that from what we changed, you know, we changed over down through the years? And to me, the sunlight, the sunlight takes a toll on it depending on how the sun affecting it. You know, this what I've seen and it got a tendency to crack. You know, if you got, it depend on how the house is sitting with the sun and, and direct, you know, and a lot of people doesn't know that, homeowners doesn't know that either, but in the long run, you got effect in the, am I right? I'm right about that, right?
The, the product we use, we haven't had an issue with. We do use a little thicker product than the base grade. We found it eliminates, you know, waviness in the size of home. When you have a longer run with a straight without an interruption, a break, a corner or a window or something, it can look a little wavy. It can look a little wavy. We found the thicker stuff, reduces that, we have less customer complaints with it. But we haven't had any issue with fading. Where, where we've had issues, we've had some very unusual issues because we built so many homes. We had incident where a large picture window just aligned just perfectly with the setting sun that caused damage to the neighbor's house on siding. We've also had that happen with, hardy with the cement board siding. The, to, to, and I guess in my eyes, my view, the advantage of the cement siding is it gives you more color options. However, what we've also discovered is the more interesting colors you put out there, they fade much quicker. If you put a very simple earth tone color, it tends to last, you know, twelve years or so before you may have to paint the home. If you put, like, we put up some really pretty green, pretty bright greens and blues, very interesting colors and customers really like them, you have to repaint them about every five years. So we try to lean a little to the conservative side on deciding color choices, et cetera.
Okay, you, you had another one?
Were there any other staff recommendations that the applicants had conflict with? Okay. Would you like me to go through the other staff recommendations where they're in agreement?
Yeah, let's go, let's go on through it. We got time for it. Let's go on through it, yeah.
As you will note in your memo, when you look at the described conditional and permitted uses, some appear in blue, some appear in green. Text above in blue is text that staff recommends be added to the use, uses identified as conditional. What that means is they identified several uses as conditional, but did not specify the condition, conditions. What we have in blue are the recommended conditions. Text in green are uses identified as permitted uses that staff recommends be identified specifically as accessory uses. For example, they identify greenhouses as a permitted use. We think that that's appropriate as an accessory use to a home. You wouldn't want a principal use, you know, horticultural, you know, greenhouse within the development. Staff recommends the list of commercial uses be identified as conditional within the area of the development designated for townhouses. Said condition being that the master plan alteration is subject to planning commission review and recommendation and council approval. One of the concerns I had when this development first came is that we know that this corridor in the future will have commercial viability, particularly with its adjacency to Betis Academy Road. With them putting in an entrance into the development and having the commercial access off of that, that actually is a good planning principle for having future commercial development access off an interior street as opposed to multiple ingress and egresses off of Edgefield Road. In the future, say thirty years, the market may be advantageous for the redevelopment of that townhome section as commercial properties. We think from a staff standpoint, it would be appropriate if a party was interested in developing a commercial business there, that they come back to the planning commission, get the master plan amended to identify a specific commercial use within that area and then recommend it to county council. County council could adopt that and then they would be able to move forward with that land development. Yes?
I forgot one thing.
Sure.
Connectivity. There was a, a road proposed to be left open in Norton by the playground to the property to, closer to Edgefield. Where that, where the park playground is. And we've looked at the, you know, who owns the property and, I mean, we're connecting into property owned by a church or there's various other little pieces. It's gonna be so hard to put that together. It just seems like it's sort of gonna be very, very difficult to ever really connect it because of the existing property owner. Who owned that property?
There, yeah, there's a little strip blocking access in one spot. There are multiple homes on, you know, really deep, like flag style lots. A fifteen-acre piece of property, so it's a predominantly smaller properties. The only property of any real size is owned by a church trustee group at the corner of Betis Academy.
Right, that on the corner, that belonged to Mount Canyon Church, across there, right, in the corner there. That's right, they inherited that not too long ago on a wheel, right?
Is the design of the entry road coming into the development gonna be a divided island or is it just a, just a two-lane road or what is, what, what is envisioned for that to be coming into the development?
We have done a variety over the years and we've found when we divide it, it just gets destroyed. Between moving, moving vans, any major delivery vehicles that come into the community as well as trash trucks. So we've gotten to where we have done away with that whole center island.
If I may, Chairman, so what they're referring to was our, the fourth recommendation from staff, which is staff recommends that future, for, for future potential interconnectivity, a space be left open on the northeastern portion of the property where the road network could be extended to the adjacent properties, ideally at the sacrifice of the minimum number of lots. What we were referring to there is as they described, you have undeveloped properties at the intersection of Betis Academy between this property here. Staff is of the belief that if you had more commercial development along Edgefield Road, once again, it'd be beneficial for it to be accessing off an interior street as opposed to multiple ingress and egress points off of Edgefield Road. And if there is a, a space reserved so that a road could potentially be interconnected there for future development or future interconnectivity, whatever it may be, we believe that would be beneficial.
Okay, that would be private, right there in phase two, eliminating a lot there somewhere? Right there, lot, on the last lot zone, let's see, I'm trying to see if I can see my numbers here.
We don't, we don't have a problem spending.
Sixty-one, sixty-two, and sixty-three, sixty-four in the corner there. That the hell you talking about, right?
Yes, sir, phase two.
Not bad. Yes, sir.
What, what we thought we could do, instead of spending that money to give up a lot or two, we can make that park nicer. We could put, you know, more amenities in the park for the residents who live there. We think that's a probably, we think that's a better use of funds than, than connecting it. We're very questionable whether it can ever, what can be done with it in the future.
We'll take note of it, yeah, okay.
And, and I will add, Chairman, that there, it's not just the park location that staff is specifically recommending. It could be any other position off that road there. Perhaps the three-way intersection that you see towards the end of phase two is one potential.
Kevin, if we left a roadway in there like you're talking about, let's just say somebody did develop what is, what's now the church property. If that became a whatever, gas station, restaurant, would that not create a problem in that you could get people cutting through this subdivision to get over to Williams Road, which could be a hazard at that point?
Potentially so. By leaving the space open, a future planning commission could be aware of what it is that's being proposed there and if it's something that's appropriate to be interconnected or not. For example, if it was a church, it might be appropriate for it to be able to connect there or if it was additional residential homes, having the interconnectivity could be something that's beneficial. It's behind the same logic as to why you typically want two entrances into a development. The more ways there are to access something, the less traffic issues typically you're going to see if there's a wreck, a fire, something of that nature.
Have you typically developed your stormwater detention pieces? Has that typically been just a fenced area and something that's maintained or is it something that's kind of meant to be? And the homeowners association would take care of the maintenance of those?
That's typically what happens towards the border. We, we set up a, an association that has a mandatory fee from each property owner, usually annually. And they have enough teeth in the organization to be able to, you know, make sure they get paid enough to be able to operate the neighborhood. Take care of that, take care of the parks as well as entrance features and anything else that we can do.
Some of the municipalities would rather us deed it over to them so they can maintain it and keep it as well that we do, that we work, work in because, you know, sometimes homeowners, even though they're supposed to maintain it, once we're gone, they don't, maybe not maintain it. So we don't have any problem in deeding it to Edgefield County and letting you guys.
Yeah, we don't wanna get in that business. We, we, we understand that. We, we don't wanna get in that business.
What, what, what does Edgefield County stance on that for detention ponds at this point?
Typically, we don't want it.
We don't get in that.
It becomes a maintenance burden on, on the county. I cannot state though what the county's official position would be on this. That would be something I would leave to the county administrator. There could be something that if, say the planning commission passed this on to county council with a recommendation approval, it's supposed to be something that they could possibly earmark, earmark and ask county council to consider, since it would be ultimately council in the same way when they adopt a road would be adopting the stormwater management systems, detention ponds and be agreeing to maintain it in perpetuity.
Okay, you have anybody? Y'all have any more? We're gonna have to move on to our next item. We appreciate your stuff, thank you. And we all listen consideration, consideration here. Our next article is proposed plan development application for P and J Development. Porsche two oh eight, double out, double out, zero zero eight, triple out, Edgefield Road by P and J Development. John Henderson, Glenn Gentry, the developer with P and J Development, you hear, and McKinley Preston, the project engineer with Blue Water Civil Design, the project engineer here to join us in this wet session here. So, let's see, I gotta find this now. Just one of Whitlock Road, right? Whitlock. Is that right?
I'll get the map hold up just.
This is what I'm trying to figure out where, where I'm at. Yeah, this is, that's right, one. P and J. You find any of them? Wait a minute, excuse us a second, we trying to find this thing here, I think.
It should be the last memo in your packet and it starts on page. Pardon me, it's not in your packet because they didn't.
Oh, okay, okay, not in the pack.
It's on the screen.
Okay. All right, you want to talk to us here and tell us what you got in mind?
Yeah, so this is just a perspective, I just wanna get y'all's thoughts, I wanna get your opinion. So this is gonna be two hundred and forty-nine lots. Sixty-five point seven four acres will be residential and will have two point three nine acres of commercial area. The density is approximately three point eight lots per acre. And so we're actually providing seventeen point eight acres of open space. So twenty-six percent of the site will be recreational open spaces used for amenity areas, walk trails, just nature kind of type skills. So, you know, large amount of space and I can let John talk about the housing.
Um, yeah, so these are forty-two foot base lots basically proposed. And we've struggled with two accesses and we think we have a, obtained another access on this, in between the stone property to spread out those accesses to give her, give us deep, deeper access into the property so that we're not, you can see, yeah, there.
So that access there that's really close to the.
This is already existing.
That widened entrance there, we'll actually be removing that because they're just right close together and we'll be coming, changing the layout for the road to come in from that little strip like you showed.
Now, where, where are we on Edgefield Road, Kevin? Where are we?
This is at the Aiken County line.
Aiken, Aiken County, right?
Basically, Aiken County line follows the bottom side of the property line.
It's just after Ridge Road's intersection.
Okay, gotcha.
It's where the divided median starts. And the way we have it now, we're, one entrance will be access to the median. So you'll have left and right out on the main entrance and the second entrance will be right in and right out only. We're hoping if we move it, if we're able to move it to the stone, we'll be able to access, hopefully we can go have two full accesses. We do have an amenities center that's shown that's gonna be pool pavilion provided with walk trails leading, leading to that, to that area, which is basically in the center of the project. We do have water access and we do have sewer access. Sewer will be by pump station. Other than that, we're looking for, we've had several conversations with Kevin, looking for recommendations to try to work through how to get this best submitted.
If I may, Chairman?
Yeah.
The prospective development here is a planned development, like the one we just discussed. There was some discussion as to whether or not planned developments were subject to the moratorium. We got the official opinion of the county attorney today that the application for a planned development, the rezoning part that the planning commission reviews and then recommends to county council is not subject to the moratorium. However, the application for the major subdivision within the development which follows an approval is subject to the moratorium. So what that would mean in theory is after their discussion here today with the commission and their, you know, changes, ideas or whatever discussed, they could then apply for the planned development. It could be reviewed by the planning commission, the planning commission make it a recommendation to county council. County council could approve it, but they would not be able to apply for any phase of the development until the moratorium had ended.
Okay. Yeah, comment being bound, we figured the basis of it. You, you had, you don't have any more comments right now?
No, sir.
What's your average home price in there?
Um, gonna be between one sixty and two ten. And again, we're, we're developers here and not actual home builders, so as we get to, you know, another work session where we have that nailed down a little more, we will.
Have you looked at trying to get access to Ridge Road to help with your.
Have you looked at trying to get access to Ridge Road to help with your traffic?
Yes, sir, very, very in-depth. There's two properties between us and Ridge Road by two different owners that are not for sale.
Okay.
Cannot be obtained.
Do you know what your amenity package is gonna look like? I know you mentioned it briefly, but can you talk a little more about that?
Um, yes, sir. So this is usually a small park, dog park, playground area. And, and as you can tell, it's pretty, pretty sizable in there. So, and it'll include, include a pool with a small pool house and a cabana and access and parking lot, so.
And what about your entrance landscaping, street trees, those kind of things?
So, uh, the main entrance that we have now, proposed now, is gonna be served as the entrance to that commercial parcel as well. So it'll definitely be wider probably than average. Your average residential, our actual entrance features probably will not start until we get to the back of the commercial property. So from the road, it would be more seen as a commercial entrance, I would say.
And we are showing that buffer there between the commercial and our residential lots. So if on the road, you'll mainly just be seeing the commercial area and then we'll have the buffer of trees, shrubs, whatnot, between that and the residential blocks.
And as well, through the access that we recently obtained on the stone property, we, uh, we've granted her a fifty-foot buffer. So there'll actually be a buffer around the entire, entire property.
You gonna have sidewalks?
Yes.
Lighted sidewalks?
Yes, sir.
What's the road design? John, is it, uh, what's the width of the road? Do you know, based on what you plan?
Um, I believe we have it designed at twenty-four feet.
Yeah, that would be a fifty-foot roadway and twenty-four feet, so.
That's travel lane, so back to back here looking at twenty-six. Twenty-seven.
Have you thought about any design guidelines or use restrictions on your commercial parcel since it is kind of your front door?
Yes, sir, we've had, uh, Kevin actually mentioned that during some of our conversation. And I believe it's already zoned. The commercial parcel's already zoned.
As the applicant, you could have two options. One would be to have the commercial property as an out parcel that retains its original zoning. What we typically do in a planned development is it would eventually become an out parcel, but it would be subject to the planned development zoning. However, to that specific area, you would identify specific allowed uses. You could discuss with the commissioners what you can envision in terms of the allowed commercial uses there. Commissioners, you could also share any particular restrictions you have in mind or, you know, what kind of commercial entity you would like to see there in terms of uses.
Well, you wouldn't want to see a mechanic shop there. I mean, you know, you'd want to see something that the people that live in the planned development in the neighborhood could use and enjoy. So it would definitely need to, there'd need to be some thought there, in my opinion, around use. You know, something that would be quiet, not something that would, you know, attract large crowds and loud noises. So I think there should be some, some thought put into that.
I guess given the same size lots for everything that you expect, basically the same house to be repeated at the, who's lots?
Yeah, there'll be approximately six, six or seven different house plans they follow. So it will not be the exact same house every time. Six or seven different plans that they follow.
Okay, we, we appreciate it, thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, at this time, we're going to, uh, we got about several minutes. We're gonna join.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just to speak to the audience, if you would like to speak on a specific public hearing item, please make sure that you sign the public hearing sheet for that item. If you are here to discuss the land management ordinance, that is not on the agenda. Please feel free to take one of my business cards and contact me and we can sign you up for a small group meeting or set you up on the LMO info email list where you'll be notified when future public hearings regarding the LMO are taking place.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I was getting ready to entertain, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion second, that we adjourned, me, we'll recess for about five or six minutes. We start back at six o'clock. Ah, you doing good? I'm gonna get these up.
Warren, comma, I'm sorry, I missed this earlier, period. I will let you know how it goes, period.
One type of show we're not gonna have in the, in the most small meetings.
People are interested.
They, they come to the, have you follow me home?
Yes, 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 I know. Something else for sure.
Sorry, Joe.
So. Brain stones.
Sure, let me, let me take care of this for a minute.
Hello, how are you? So you got, you got a double whammy. But you made it to the main one, which is now, so. I really.
Let's just say, that's a bunch of money. We'll just say, I'm trying to forget.
We can't put that, but we can get down low enough with the pounds.
Yeah, no problem.
So it's gonna have to go here now. Once we get here, this ain't gonna apply. You know what I'm saying?
It has to be done in a way that is.
This is the most small, so those are the weights.
The motion will hopefully be approved in a moment. All right, how you doing, sir? Good thing. I'm hanging in. It, it's improving. I'm averaging seventy now. Oh, well, in the fifties, oh, well, seventy. You know, it's not, it's keeping it, it disappeared after all of a sudden. He been praying for it, I appreciate that. At this time, uh, eighteen hundred hours, we're gonna call our planning commission. It's our regular meeting to audit at this time. And, uh, six o'clock, I think, eighteen hundred, yeah, April, April the fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. We're gonna have our invocation and then we'll do our pledge. Heavenly Father, we come at this hour to thank you for aligning us together here again at this planning commission there, God. And we thank you for each and everyone that giving their time to serve. And we thank you for those that inattended it well. And we ask you to guide us through this meeting there, God, that we are, that our hearts right and do what is pleasing in their sight and not man's sight, but according to we, we will guide it there, God, to do what is best for the individual to this county. Go with us and guide us, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Stand up for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I need a motion for approval of the agenda of tonight's meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a, uh, motion to amend the agenda that below. I'd like to add an item called LMO observations below item C on the agenda for some observations from, uh, commission.
Okay, I get a second?
Second.
Motion is second, and say it, motion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Pose it, I'd have it, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
You're approving the amendment of the agenda and then you have to approve the agenda.
Now we approve the agenda now, okay.
Can I get a quick clarification?
Yes, sir.
Would, this would be replacing D and the current D would move to E, or is this?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I now need a motion to approve the amendment.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, right hand. Agenda approved. Approval of the minutes for March eleventh, twenty twenty-one wet session meeting. Motion.
Motion.
Motion second, okay, all in favor, right hand. Pose it, I'd have it. Now we need approval of March eleventh regular meeting. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, right hand. Motion approved. Okay, thanks. All right, we have no guest speakers. Reports, any reports, Kevin? No report?
No, sir.
No reports, okay. All right, new business. We got into new business here. And our new business is rezoning application for rural resident, R I to industrial development on, uh, ID particle, ID one forty-five, double out, double out, six-three, six-four, eight-five, eight-six, eight-seven, eight-eight, eight-nine, triple out at Rainbow Falls Road by William Ellis and Southern Felt Company. At this time, we're going to, uh, be open for a public hearing. And I have a list of names here, I don't know how many plans speak, I'm, uh, we're going to limit it to, uh, three minutes. And, uh, stay on the subject of what we own. This is concerning the rezoning of Southern Felt, which is at the end of Rainbow Falls Road here. Come up to the mic, say your name and address and then you can further proceed from that. Uh, I'm gonna look at the list, I don't have any check. John Lewis, are you on here for that? Raise your, raise your hand, that all want to speak on, uh, this particular item. And, uh, let me check your name here. Who? Okay, yes, I just mean, hold on, True Dare. Okay, all right, next. LaFelix. Okay, next.
Michael McCoy.
Michael McCoy, okay, let's see McCoy. Let's see if I see your name on here. Did you sign on the sheet?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got you, sir, okay. Next. Lorenzo Williams, okay. All right, next, anybody else? Who? Oh. You're not on here, are you? You signed it. I'm trying to find you, excuse me. Okay, anyone else? Okay, anyone else? Okay, anyone else? Who? Brous, okay. Anyone else? That was Brous? Okay, I'm gonna call your name and you come up in three minutes. Uh, Lorenzo Williams. Yeah, okay.
My name is Lorenzo Williams and I'm a resident on thirteen thirty-nine Rainbow Falls Road. And, uh, I hear that Felt wants to, uh, rezone. I guess their property concerning, uh, business, which I think would be good for the county. But as far as Rainbow Falls Road is concerned, I'm thinking we already have enough through traffic coming through from other neighboring, uh, businesses in the community. And, uh, at night, there is tremendously, uh, the pollution of noise, nuisance. I mean, you can hear the machines humming in the night. So, uh, I oppose the rezoning of Rainbow Falls Road from rural residential to industrial. And that's why I'm here tonight to voice my concern because this is. And that's why I'm here tonight to voice my concern, because this is where my castle is, this is where I feel I should have peace. So I'm saying, uh, tonight that, uh, I support with the rest of the residents, uh, not to rezone for commercial.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Trudell, is that right? Okay.
My name is Frederica Trudell, I reside at twenty-five Bell Circle, which is just off Rainbow Falls Road. I have been a resident there all my life. I'm a third generation resident. Um, I raised my children there, my husband and I. Southern Felt Company, um, rezoning, I am opposed to. I'm opposed to because I live there because it's rural residential. And the things that is stated about rural residential for Edgefield County was preserve the rural nature of the area, fostering growth that is relatively quiet with no traffic. The citizens of this community would like to maintain the quality of life that they have enjoyed for generations. The residents of this community have endured some of the traffic that has been increased since Southern Felt has been on this end, um, the noise. I used to not hear traffic in my home, but now I hear traffic and I think it's in my yard. Um, there is also wildlife. I used to see deer in my backyard. I don't think I seen one deer the past season in my backyard. Southern Felt also, um, has a smell. I can't say that it's in my yard, but when I'm passing by, I smell it. And with this, I'm re, I'm the property that butts up to the parcel that's in question. So this new eighty thousand square foot building would be in my backyard, which is almost like half the size of a Super Walmart in my backyard, my rural residential area. I would say to this committee, um, please do not take it, well, please take into consideration our plea here tonight to keep our area where we are comfortable as rural residential, living there for generations. Um, and most of the neighbors, I would say probably ninety-eight percent of the people that live on Rainbow Falls Road are generational residents. There are probably at least some families that have five generations that still live in the area. And I would ask that you would take that in consideration and wish John Lewis would have stayed to hear some of what the community has to say about, um, this rezoning of the southern, this little parcel of land. Thank you.
Arayn Burt.
Good afternoon. My name is Lori Talbot Burt and I live at, um, twenty-eight Bell Circle. I also have the same concerns that, uh, my sister just spoke about. Uh, my mom now, that, um, land that they are wanting to re, um, zone butts right up into our property. My mom is right on that line. She's an elderly, um, um, woman that hears all of, um, this noise at night as it is. So my concern is for the elderly in that area, the generations that are there and the land is being passed down to other generations. So I too am opposing, um, the rezoning of this land.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Michael McCoy.
Good evening. I oppose of this, uh, rezoning. Um, I stay at nine hour drive directly across from Bell Circle. I have several concerns, um, one, the Felt Company just, uh, added on a few years back. And now they want to come further up the road. I can't even sometimes go to my mailbox because my mailbox is on the opposite side of the road. And the big trucks are just coming, not just from the Felt Company, but from other companies, uh, going down to Williams', uh, landfill, trash dropping off the truck on our roads. And Lord knows, when we going back down the road to go do what we gotta do to get on Edgefield Road, man, the big trucks coming out of the Felt Company, you gotta be careful because you, they'll run into you. Or if you at the, because you gotta go down the hill, if you sitting there at the stop sign waiting to turn, man, it's a fear that the big trucks can come and push you on into the road. You know, and, 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 and my father-in-law owns the property across from Bell Circle. And he's, he, he's passing all this land down to his children. Now, we not home buyers, we are homeowners. We own our homes. Most of us on Rainbow Falls Road, we don't have mortgages. We own this stuff. And, and, and if, and if you all allow the Felt Company or any other, uh, industrial company to keep coming up that road, then we all know what's gonna happen. You're gonna raise our taxes so high that we can't afford to pay property taxes. So let's just be real. And that'll be a crying shame. But what if, what if you passing your property down to your children? Would you want that to happen to your children? What about the pollution, the fresh air? And yes, at nighttime, uh, all that traffic coming through, man, you think, you think that you own Highway twenty-five. And I had one truck, the trailer from the Felt Company turn, make, you know, to go in from Albert Drive and turn around in my front yard. A tractor trailer. And here, that, that scared the daylight out of my wife. And of course, you know, if you scare my wife, then I, I got, I got to be the protector. So that could be some ugly situations. You know, I'm not saying that for humor, but I'm saying it to be real. And we, we just, we, we just, we just can't have, you know, and like I said, going to the mailbox, the big trucks coming by, they hitting our mailbox, I'm tired of buying mailboxes. You know, when my mail come, I want my mail. And I'm going to my mailbox right now every day looking for my stimulus check.
Okay.
I don't want nothing to happen.
Thank you. Abbott Jackson. Abbott Jackson.
Kevin, Kevin, can you pull this property up on the screen for us, please?
My name is Abbott, my name is Abbott Jackson, I live at nineteen Rainbow Falls, I live at Albert Drive, nineteen Albert Drive. My road, my road run into Rainbow Falls Road. And I have some property there that I give it over to my children and my grandchildren. And, uh, actually, I let to see that they can be able to live there in peace with no problem coming up and down that road. So that road is, it is terrible, I'm gonna be honest with you, it's terrible. And sometime, four o'clock in the morning, those cement trucks and different things running that road. And they be going, I mean, they going, the traction trailer hauling the sand, different places on that road. And I do not, well, I let not see anyone hit on that road. And also with my children, I don't wanna see that. If I can keep up the taxes and all that, rezoning from going up, or whatever we can handle to do, but what y'all can do to help us, I want y'all to do that. And then sometime, I don't know, they got, like my son-in-law, Mr. McCoy said, them trucks come in my, in my yard, I got no trespassing sign. They come right on through my property, turn around and go back out. Sometime they go in the back, in the back of my, on the back, back there. I can stop, I go out and stop to ask them, and what are y'all doing, what y'all want? If you don't get out the way, you gonna be, you gonna pancake. And they don't stop for nothing. Want them. So I don't know. If y'all can do what you can to help the family and any community, I would appreciate that. Thank y'all very much, God bless you.
Thank you. LeBron Felix.
My name is Laverne McCain Felix and I reside at three Bell Circle, North Augusta, which is right off of Rainbow Falls Road. I stand in opposition to the rezoning of the parcel that Southern Felt is trying to acquire to change it from rural residential to industrial. Um, I've lived there also all my life. I was born and raised there. Um, I am a second generation. Um, currently, that road used to be all, um, rural residential where you always knew who was on your road and, and it was like a family, everybody took care of everybody. But since Southern Felt has moved there, that has changed. Um, the dynamics of it that has changed so tremendously is that there's commercial vehicles going up and down that road constantly. Um, like Mr. Jackson and Mr. McCoy stated, um, those vehicles, when they miss their shipping and receiving area, then they'll come in our driveway and they'll turn around. Um, and they think it's a turnaround spot. We've had damaged water meters, we've had the road torn up, there's been no trespassing signs there, they disregard those. All that is still going on. Um, the noise pollution is there. Um, we have the machines run all night long. And if they're gonna expand, they're gonna have more machinery, which backs up to our property, that's gonna be running twenty-four hours. Um, when we moved there, we, um, thought of a good place for a family life, it wasn't so isolated, but it was also a good place where you could raise your children. Now you're scared to almost have your children out in the yard playing because of all the ju, the commercial traffic that's going on. Um, we have the through, we get the through traffic that runs from twenty-five to Granite ville, we get all of that also. Um, the air pollution, there is a plastic, a burning plastic smell that comes from, um, Southern Felt. And if you step outside, you can easily smell it with no problem at all. Um, I strong, again, I strongly oppose this rezoning, um, because this is where we have had peaceful, um, sleep and where we continue to want to reside and everything. And I would just ask you all to really take in consideration, there are other industrial parks that they could relocate to or either to move, uh, if they wanted to expand businesses, but not right on a rural residential road. So we ask you all to please consider that.
Thank you. Well, it's Fouse, Fouse.
My name is Willie George, I'll stay on, on six hour drive. Abbott Jackson's son-in-law. Like, like my brother-in-law, my, my, my record said, it's a lot of traffic. And if, if you're gonna make that industrial, that mean your tax gotta go up. Anytime you make anything, anything in the dust, your tax go up. And your tractor trailer, I know, I know what, what, what a tractor trailer do, come on my extract trailer arm driver. And, um, you know, you only got children out there, still young children out there, you know, and, um, you wanna make sure their life is safe. You got older people out there, you wanna make sure, so, uh, it's peaceful out there for them. If you build their thing and, you know, the, the way I see is, a lot of people build thing, that they don't care about people for peace and quiet, all they think about is money. Money is not important than a life, or peace and quiet for older people, that, and elder people, something like that. I moved down here in, um, thirty, almost thirty-nine years ago from, from Aiken, South Carolina. If, if it gonna get north like, like did, it best me to go back to Aiken. But i- if y'all can, can, consider not to do this thing for the, for the peoples, because you, you got to protect the people more than, um, a plant or something like that. The life is much important than a plant. Thank you.
Good evening. I am here on behalf of my constituents. First of all, I would like to say I thank you all for being patient with us. Uh, and the people that just spoke is my constituents, District Four. Um, I have heard each, every one of my constituents and I want them to know that I support them one hundred percent. I don't know who is Mr. William Ellis or Ellis William, where he live, but I feel as though he should have came before the people that lives on Rainbow Falls Road to explain what his decision were. Probably, uh, we have two industry on Highway twenty-five, minority and bondage. And to me, it would be feasible for the guy, Mr. William, to look into the other two industries because they have sign, a sign there that say land for sale. Or if you look down the road from, um, US Felt, is another building down there empty. I don't even know what he want to do with the eight thousand. But looking at the staff recommendation, it says staff view this as an area. Who's the staff?
Staff in, in the plan department, the building department.
Building. So when did you all find that it was an area?
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to respond?
Uh, I think what we have here, we had a comprehensive plan, as you know, and, uh, and when the comprehensive plan were reviewed, basically, US Felt was already there as a commercial. And I don't know, it got misplaced some way that it wasn't classified commercial in that area, when it, you know, when the comprehensive plan redone. And, and so this is where that came from. And by it being, what we were gonna, what we looking at was, do we need to recommend the county council to, we correct, make the correction on the, uh, comprehensive plan in order to, you know, if we rezoned this to, because see, y'all read a commercial now. The place is operating commercial now, but it should have been placed on the comprehensive plan at commercial, you know, I'm doing, I'm talking about now, at the present building, the present location, that's it. You understand what I'm saying?
But it wasn't though, right?
It wasn't, man, it overlooked.
So really, the constituents want, yeah. I mean, you think about it, cause it's, it said a planning, staff view as an area. I see that's an area too. I am with the constituents, I oppose it not to be rezoned for industry and I would like to personally sit down and talk to Mr. Ellis Wing. Is he here tonight?
He was, yeah, I think he, he's on there.
Would you, would you, Mr. Chairman, uh, he's the property owner and he's currently in transaction to sell the property to Southern Felt?
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, that's right, okay, okay.
Cause our understanding, looking at the staff, the staff recommendation, it says that it was satisfied with the constituents.
So Kevin, ju- just for clarity, um, all we're here to do is make a recommendation to you guys on county council.
That's correct.
So it'll be up to y'all whether or not this passes or not, not us.
Oh, okay, y'all gonna give it, put it in our court.
No, ma'am, that, I mean, see, all we do right now.
That's, that's what is before us.
We can't.
Mr. Chairman, may, may I, may I speak?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
The, uh, just to make a few notes, the memorandum does not state anything about the views of the constituency. Uh, the memorandum is staff's recommendation, uh, to speak specifically to Dr. Keenan's questions during the comprehensive planning process, the reason we believe it was identified in there is because there was no specific discussion ever around Southern Felt. Um, typically, when you are in the process of comprehensive planning, a longstanding industry, you typically would not make non-conforming, uh, unless the intent was to drive it out of that location. Because as a result, if they ever ceased operation or wanted to expand, if the comprehensive plan was not, uh, identifying that area as a permitted type use, then they would be unable to expand in the current situation we are in now. I believe that since there was no specific discussion and due to Southern Felt being isolated, it likely just wasn't ever thought about or discussed. Uh, that said, it is a judgment decision of That said, it is a judgment decision of the planning commission, the recommendation they make to county council, and it is a judgment decision of county council as to whether or not rezone the property and/or change the comprehensive plan.
Okay, all right. Again, I oppose with the constituents.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, all right, thank you, I thank that. And we didn't, we didn't owe me to anybody, I think, had all those out the way. Okay, we're going to move on to, now, for the planning commission, our discussion time now. Planning commission recommendation, we heard coming from DM and we heard coming from, now it felt and we might, in further discussions.
People go first.
Well, I, I see here, we got a, we got, we, we really have, my, this is my opinion. We got some things that are based that are not all a Southern Felt problem, and that's the traffic. Now, now, we know, I don't know, that, that Rainbow Falls goes out I-20, they have an exit on I-20, okay? They don't, they don't, but they go on the Graniteville, all right, but quite a few traffic. And so I don't know how much percentage of that is Southern Felt. It can't be all, it can't be over maybe 10 or 15, 20% at the most. You think, what, how many trucks, I don't wish somebody here to tell me how many trucks they have come in a day, but you got several, we in different places that not to mention named, that trucks are coming through with shortcuts. I have traveled Rainbow Falls, a bit, and a lot of traffic in there. And we don't want to blame it all on Southern Felt, not theirs. You know, you know, we got to deal with traffic. We got to deal with traffic on, on 25. That traffic going to be there, it going to get worse in, in time to come. Just putting out, you know, this year, that don't have anything to do, it do too. But what, then we got a company there that providing jobs, that been there all those years, and they want to expand, so we got to make a decision on that, and so forth. And I know that too, but all at once. Well, that, that's, that's another point. There are people, you can't hire people if they don't want to work. And I'm going to tell you on that, I'm a businessman, and, and right now, we can't even find folk to work because they getting checked, but that's another question too. Now, anybody else got, I'm quitting there. I'm just putting out my tipset where.
Well, I'll, I'll, Rodney, I'll start, I guess, because I'm sure we probably all have some comments about it. I don't, I'm guessing Southern Felt was there prior to zoning of, back when, Kevin, I mean, did he?
This property was owned rural residential in late 2018, per the application of Council Bibbs of the time. That was the Highway 25 rezoning process that took place in 2018. As far as I know, before that, it was unzoned property.
Right. Unzoned property, which is again, the issue that we continue to have down Highway 25 predominantly because you have these types of mixes that are, in my view, kind of, because of proximity to each other, they're incompatible. You have industrial uses backing up to residential uses. And it's, it is one thing, you know, I think Southern Felt has seen some success in their business, so again, they're expanding, but you know, it's one thing to be expanding, I think, in my mindset along Highway 25, but to kind of continue to push backwards for where they are, you know, in industrial and a residential zoning are just, you know, you would typically see a commercial or something, or some pretty strong buffer in between those that would allow the smell, the issues of traffic, operations, noise, and you know, I know in your recommendation, you say that they've done so without surrounding issues to residents. I hear residents coming now saying that this has been going on a long time and it's going to do nothing but get worse. And to me, these two things are incompatible. I think Southern Felt is doing obviously what it needs to do as a business to expand, to do its operation, but to continue to be on top of the residents in this manner, at least going that way, is not a compatible change in my mind. Because it is, it's one thing if you have, you know, a, a large property buffer or you have something that is removing that smell or odor or problems that come in. This could be, you know, this isn't against Southern Felt, it's just how they operate, but it's just a matter of, that could be any business doing that. And to me, when you have, you know, this residential versus industrial abutting each other, they just are typically, unless they're, you know, a very clean, you know, running industrial operation, which, you know, some are and some aren't, but to me, I, I, just hearing from the residents, you know, having a warehouse in a backyard, to me, is not a compatible use. That's my view. Thank y'all for coming.
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Just, just as a note, you are correct that a buffer would be required. If they were to expand, per the current county ordinance, they would have to provide buffer to the adjacent properties.
I understand, I understand. How much of a buffer are we talking though?
So this would, if this is considered an affluent producing industry, which is one that produces smell, and the adjacent use is a single-family dwelling, that requires a type five buffer, and that's asterith. So the type five busts asterith is a 50-foot buffer yard with eight large trees, 12 small trees, and 54 shrubs per 100 feet.
Well, Kevin, my, my, my point about buffers obviously stronger than that. I mean, I understand what the property buffer is. My, my, my buffer is, you know, a football field kind of thing, you know.
You, you're referring to zoning buffers, correct?
Yes, yes, sir, I'm, I'm, I'm talking on a different level of buffer here.
It's a 436-foot buffer right now.
I just want to make sure that the commissioners were aware.
And the problem right now is now there's, they are having these problems and, you know, these types of industries are going to use trucks. I mean, I don't know how, it's internal operations of what Southern Felt is doing there, but to me, to, you know, this use being pushed down this road, to me, is just not a compatible use.
Have there been any type of traffic studies done in there? Or do we know how much this expansion is going to increase traffic? If we've already got a traffic problem and then they expand?
The, the only traffic study I could imagine there would be DOT's regular traffic analysis of Highway 25.
And that roadway is just a two-lane kind of typical rural country road, correct? Because I've been down it about twice, but it's just, that's what I remember.
It's a prime example of not having the proper zoning in place to stop people like Southern Felt from putting something like this in a residential area.
You have anything?
I agree with him.
I, you know, and I'm not against Southern Felt trying to run their business and do things, don't get me wrong. I'm, I'm a pro-growth, pro-smart growth person, but this just doesn't fit in my bag as being a compatible use.
Being a selfish resident myself, I'm with the residents.
Okay.
My recommend, I would like to make a motion to deny the, I hate to say it, I hate, but I'd make a motion to deny the rezoning of the property.
I second it. Yeah, motion is second that we, that the commission denied the recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, can I get a clarification? This would be a recommendation that county council.
Right, right, okay.
Do you want to give a reason, meaning it's not compatible with the?
Yeah, based on resident comment and where we are, you've got basically industrial back into residential, which is part of the issue that needs to be clarified, not just here, but in other parts of Edgefield County. So, you know, this is, this is an example of 30 years later of issues of things being incompatible uses. Southern Felt started off as a small industrial use there. In fact, they may have bought that, I don't know if they actually built that building themselves or bought that building, but they started off in one building. Again, you can look at the photo, see where the additions were. And again, not, I want the business to thrive, but not at the detriment of, you know, the, everything else that kind of runs around it.
So that's part of your motion's incompatible with?
Yes, I, I, I see incompatible uses here based off of?
I got to get a second. Discussion, in discussion side, what I'm going to say. Now, now, what I want to say here is that this not going to solve your traffic problem and not going to solve your noise problem and, and this not going to put them out of business. Because you understand that now, we can't, you know, we can't make them move, we can't see the operation, but this is just going to stop this now. So all in favor, right hand, opposing, I'd have it.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I want to notify everyone that this is not final action, this is a recommendation to county council. County council, at the second reading of this ordinance, if it reaches second reading, would have a public hearing.
Talk to your councilman there. All right, item two, subdivision application for hollow oak, ID 176, double out, double out, zero 18, triple out, Sunny Brook Road and Sable Lane by JS MG Development LLC. We have a public hearing on this. Do we have anyone on this list that want to make some comments on? I don't see it on here though. Okay, come on up, sir, come on up. State your name in three minutes.
Steven Riggs, and I reside at 235 Nicholson Road. My family's been there for going on, this is seventh generation. I'd like to congratulate you folks, to hope that what I'm trying to do progresses down the same road. The life that I've lived, that my grandfather provided for me, is the same thing that I'm trying to do for my grandchildren that now live on this property. As we speak, I'm in the midst of acquiring 14 more acres behind me. I live less than, probably quarter mile from where this subdivision is going to take place. I've enjoyed the sanctity of driving dirt roads with my children on four-wheelers, hunting and riding and having the sanctity and the quiety, quiet and the peacefulness. And I want my generation, next generation, to enjoy the same thing. If you build these subdivision right here, which is now woods, in my opinion, whoever sold the land to do this, they don't love the land. The land I live on is mine, is part of me, you know, is, is part of my soul and what I've come to know and live. And for someone to just, they must have inherited, that's all I can say. But they didn't love it. If they're going to give it up and not enjoy it like I've enjoyed mine, and I want my children to enjoy the same. If they build this subdivision, then all the dirt roads that I know will no longer be there. They're going to turn into pavement. Then you're going to have stores, shopping malls, outlets, gas stations, filling stations, more traffic on a two-lane road. It's already, I moved there in 1974 with my parents. My great-granddae lived there in a shack before me. My children will be there when I'm gone, and I want them to enjoy the peace, you know. So I hope that you guys would vote or, you know, lean toward my side and give my family the peace that I've enjoyed.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Come on up, sir, state your name.
My name's Steve Helms, I live at 96 Sable Lane, down one of the dirt roads that he was talking about. County can't keep up with my dirt road as it is. Now you're going to put a subdivision, and I'm going to be a cross connector. And they can't, I mean, they barely can grade this, this sucker now, they can't, they can't afford to put the, the sand, the fill back in on it. Also, you're putting a subdivision about five miles away from there is volunteer fire department, no firewater. You think you're creating a safety hazard? I think you are. You're going to put 49 septic tanks and you're going to put 49 wells on a pretty small area. Okay, a half acre lot, according to a lot, yeah, that's okay. Clemson tells you that sand is great, this is where we are out there for septic tanks until you get too many. And then all you do is you're going to pollute your, your well water at that point in time whenever you get a density that high. There's no engineering studies, there's no road studies, I got four dirt roads and one paved road, barely paved, it comes in, it stops into four dirt roads. I can't get Aiken County to put a stop sign out there to save my life. I've tried a few times, they get stolen. Okay, I understand that. So they just quit putting them out there. So I got four dirt roads and another road converging in. You, you guys got to figure that one out. Someone's going to have to give Aiken County, or not Aiken County, but Edgefield County some more money to at least maintain our road correctly, which they don't do now, because they can't afford it, they're underwater on it, you know, which, okay, I live out there, I deal with it, I slow down a little bit. I mean, sometimes two mile an hour because of water runs like this, okay? So, no. That's my final. Thank you.
Anyone else? Come up, state your name.
My name's Jerome Stevens, and I submitted comments to Kevin, and I thought he was going to read them at this meeting.
Yes, they get read at the end of the public hearing for that item.
Oh, okay, and I guess I'm not allowed to talk, right?
If you, if the comments would exceed the time, I could read it or you could read it and you could have him submit his additional comment.
I would like you to read it, so it's part of the official record.
Okay.
Okay, that'd be fine, yes, sir. Right, fine, it's good, yes, sir.
The thing I wanted to stress is, three, three, please.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, for the purpose of the minutes.
If you're going, if you're going to come up here, come up, speaking, you got to come up here. And now, I thought you were going to just go ahead and read, okay?
Well, I, I want Kevin to read it, that's important to me, and if I can't talk, do you see he's going to do that?
Go ahead, you got three minutes.
Three minutes?
Yes, sir.
Let's go.
Thank you for your time and your patience. I really appreciate that. My wife and I are 100% against going forward with this development. This development, in my opinion, is being performed, or is being pursued for profit, only profit. And that is unacceptable to the residents out there, that live out there. I want to make one case in point. To put that many wells and that many septics in that area, and there's not a single hydrologist study or engineering study performed that's being made available to me as part of the public, is unacceptable. This committee should not recommend going forward with that development. It's unethical to do that, okay? If perchance that DHA has a weak moment and approves this, bottom line, we need to have this developer sign a consent order, a legal instrument, and have an engineering study done and put monitoring wells along Sable Lane and down Fishwood. And have those wells sampled to establish baseline data to make sure my well and others don't become contaminated because of the septic and the sewer. If this developer is making a thrust to put this many wells and this many septics in that small area, that's unethical. He's trying to system. I don't have time to be proud, okay? My comments are to the point, and I thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Come up, man.
My name is Mary Johnson, I live on 78 Sable Lane. We moved to that area 17 years ago. My husband and I both lived in Martinez and Augusta growing up. We purposely chose Edgefield County to live a rural life. We raised our boys there, we have land there, we have a home there. Both of my boys, one of which is Navy, is retiring and coming back to buy property by us to have that same kind of life. Right now, where we live currently on Sable Lane, they can't maintain the road, we have no internet structure, we barely have cellphone structure, our well has dried up since we've been there because the road has become more populated, we constantly have runoff. We constantly have runoff. Nicholson is not maintained, and it's a paved road. It has potholes this big around. You cross over the bridge when it rains real hard, all the washout comes in on Nicholson. So how are you going to add this many additional homes to a place that's already not maintained and kept now? On top of that, my in-laws live on Sunnybrook, which is Aiken County, which is not your concern, but it's mine, because they're retired and they're elderly, and they can't have that cut through traffic. I understand that the access is going to go on Sunnybrook, but people cut through Sable now to go to Windy Ridge, nineteen and twenty-five. So what do you think is going to happen when you add forty-nine more homes on there? I've already had to dig a four-hundred-foot well. I care not to go seven or eight hundred feet. I'm on a rock well. I have hard water. It's killed all my appliances, and that happened after more people started moving on to Sable Lane. Luckily, we have good neighbors, large lots. You're talking about taking homes right now. The smallest lot on Sable is five to six acres, and you're going to put homes on half an acre? Forty-nine of them? What? That makes no sense. So I strongly, strongly reject. On top of that, we already pay higher taxes than Aiken County, and you can't maintain our road now. So, now what? I strongly oppose.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Last caller, anyone else? Not Kevin, you want to read your? Yeah, you want to come up? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Jim Oliver. I live at six ninety-three Curry Town Road. And as a former member of the Planning Commission, I know these are tough decisions that you have to make, but this is one where you, this is like a no-brainer. This is a no-brainer, really. When I spoke in detail about not approving Anniston Point because the number of septic tanks that were going to have to be put in that subdivision and the density of those lots by Old McNally's Fish Camp, for those of you who do not know, I, I thought we had a good plan, and we had a consensus among most of us members that that was not what Edgfield County wanted. High-density populations and growth, especially in areas that are extremely rural and have, uh, large lots, thank Mr. Steve and the other people out there. Almost all of their lots are seven to ten acres, or two or three, they're, they're at least, uh, more than a half acre. And, uh, this is coming from their heart. I went out there and looked at that. Have any of y'all ever driven out there and looked at that property? Just a couple of you have. It's, uh, it's rugged. It's rural Edgfield County. I strongly, strongly recommend that you not recommend this forward under these current conditions that are proposed for it. Thank you.
Okay, Kevin, you want to read your?
Yes, sir. This is from Ron and Vicky Steve, one ninety-six Sable Lane. Uh, comments on proposed hollow development recommendation. My wife and I both oppose proceeding with this development and recommend that Edgfield County Planning Commission disapprove the application for this development. Basis for recommendation, one, uh, this area of the county is a very rural and single-family home residential of three to five acres. My wife and I live at one ninety-six Sable Lane, directly across from the proposed development. Since the Edgfield-Aiken County line cuts directly through our property, our nine-and-a-half acres is in Edgfield and Aiken Counties. Thus, part of our property appears to be somewhere in the proposed development. This is hard to determine since the site plan does not show Sable Lane. Two, insufficient information has been presented to the public concerning this proposed development. We have not received any kind of cost-benefit analysis of this proposed development. It would be presumed that a cost-benefit analysis would be prepared by the developers and reviewed by the county tax assessor and county auditor for accuracy and completeness. This should be made available to the public before proceeding on this application. Three, we are not aware of any kind of ecological, environmental assessments that have been prepared for the proposed development. Point one, my wife and I have observed red-headed woodpecker in this area, which we believe to be on the endangered species list. And major subdivision is proposed is contrary to continued existence of the woodpecker and sustaining its population. Point two, it was stated at the March eleventh Planning Commission meeting that their proposed development will be on individual septic tanks and wells. We are not aware of any engineering studies which would support this approach without impacting the existing residents' drinking water. This approach does not pass the test of reasonableness. I believe that a minimum, should this development proceed, uh, then, then the developers and the, uh, SCDHEC should enter into a legal agreement to install, maintain, and routinely sample, uh, monitoring wells to ensure that the residents' drinking water quality is not compromised. Point four, what traffic pattern management studies have been completed. There are dirt roads in the area which require routine grading and additional surface material for upkeep. This has not been done to date because of limited budgets. What should we as residents expect in future with, uh, this proposed development traffic? Thus, my wife and I do not support approving this proposed development. We have made a serious investment in our property and have promote, promoted a safe environment in our operations and living style. This proposed development is not consistent with our expectations and is not consistent with the land characteristics of current residents of the immediate area.
Okay, thank you. I think that would take the hour of public hearing on this. This time we're going to go to a planning commission review.
I've got a couple thoughts, Mr. Chairman. You know, most of the time, I, I do tend to be pro-growth, especially when we have, uh, communities that are coming in in, in the right places with the right infrastructure in place. This does not seem to be one of those developments. In my opinion, and I'm no water and septic tank expert, don't have the experience you've got, this is entirely too dense. Seventy-nine houses on half-acre lots, all on wells and septic, I mean, that just spells trouble. So, um, there, there's no way that I could support this development the way it sits today.
I had one question if I could.
Go ahead.
I think you spoke, you have a well. How close are you to the property that you're four-hundred foot deep? How close are you to the subject property? Okay, thank you.
Come in.
Where I'm from, I'm familiar with lack of performance bonds. I would think that if we can, and I, you know what, I, I can't support it either. But if I'm forced to go down that route, and I'd take the necessary equipment to complete my mission, a performance bond of epic amount should be supplied. So if these people run out of water, it's paid for to get them water. I don't know what that would cost, but. Kevin, can it be a requirement that the, if it is going to be developed, that it has to be on, uh, public water and not on wells?
I do not believe that there is any ordinance in Edgfield County that the Planning Commission can require preliminary plat approval based off the installation of infrastructure, such as water and sewer. I don't know if Andrew has.
I don't think that's been addressed in the LMO.
Yeah. Well, the LMO's in a draft state as well.
Butler, you have any?
Well, uh, my concern is a lot size, that's basic. I think it's, it could probably work, but a lot of planning would have to be done and researched. And, and I'm a professional. I consider myself a professional when it comes to sewer and water. And when I got to deal with people today, and we've been dealing with people this year on, on wells, wells and sewer. Man, when your sewer stopped, that's it. That's it. When your water stopped, that's it. You know, I don't care what kind of pump you got or what, you know, and like I say, it's a fact that a deeper, she got a four-hundred-foot well. If that well taps into the other veins, that water goes to her well. It go to the deeper water, go to the, and that's facts. I've been doing it all my life. And I'm talking about, you know, years and years and years, more than some of you been here. And this is one of my concern here, so it'd be, it'd have to be some more change made before I could vote positively for it. So, uh.
I agree. Bigger lots.
We can wait, we probably can wait something out. We can wait to make it work, but we can't make it work like this.
I agree. It is, it just is not, if it is further in town, if it is, you know, has access to public water, I mean, I, that's, that's the, the septic may, you know, if you get the sand, but not having the public water. That phone call of the issues of seventy-nine extra people going out there, and then the water table, something happening, and wells being a problem, and having no access besides a three-million-dollar extension of water to try to help, it's just, it doesn't, it just isn't, I, I don't think it fits where it is, unfortunately.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the developers present, if the commission is possibly considering a denial of preliminary plat, would the commission be interested in discussing it with the applicant to see if there's any, you know, adjustments or anything that could be made? Or there could also be, if more time was needed, a, if the developer was in agreement to postpone the automatic approval date, a, it could be discussed at a further Planning Commission meeting.
Kevin, I hear what you're saying, and, and I'm open to hearing some of that. But we did make these suggestions at a previous work session before tonight. The, the developer came in today basically with none of our modifications made whatsoever. Well, you had somebody representing you, right?
Yeah, come on and step up.
I just want to know what your recommendations would be so we can all move forward from here, so we can either postpone, see?
My. Well, the minimum lot, I think that we've approved in the past for something like this is an acre-plus. And that's, and that's, in my opinion, relatively small, but, and.
Kevin, can we make a recommendation of getting a hydrology study and basically approval being placed on something like that? Because I can't, you know, I, I understand where the developer sits, but still, I can't imagine DHEC or start kind of looking at this and thinking because of the water situation that they would even give the nod.
So this process is preliminary plat approval. Before they can get building permits, it would go through DHEC for their review of well and septic tanks. If a property didn't perk, if there was issues in terms of citing wells, uh, the developer would not be able to get a building permit from our department or a final plat approval. That would be resolved either by the developer having to increase his lot sizes, uh, or, you know, what, what, any other, i- if it was to extend water or whatever it was that was necessary in order for him to achieve that. That would be necessary for his final plat approval, uh, through our department.
So, uh, uh, one other thing, yeah, you haven't plowed Aiken County yet, right? Well, what the reason for that? Is that because of, uh, the lot size? Because if that's your interest coming in from that way, and I'd just like, when I, Aiken County feel about the condition over there. Because we don't, we don't control Aiken County. Aiken County going to make their decisions, but.
During preliminary conversation, they didn't have a problem with it. Their biggest concern was making sure that the road was paved going all the way through.
That was their biggest problem.
So if one acre, one acre lots is what you're proposing here.
I'm saying that the smallest we've ever approved is one acre plus, uh, for a community, and that was on a community with a lot less houses than what you're talking. So you may have to grow your lot size because you're talking eighty houses. You know, we're not talking twenty or thirty.
We're talking in Edgfield County.
Well.
The lots in Edgfield.
I understand, but the community's the community regardless.
So I could split that and have an entrance on the Sable, and that would do separate developments, is what you're saying?
No, I'm saying that you've got eighty houses. I don't care where the county line is. You've got eighty houses on one piece of property. So if they're all on well and septic, you've got one large issue. You can't say, oh, well, I got an issue here in Edgfield County, but I'm going to magically jump across this line right here, and I'm not going to have an issue.
One acre lots at minimum?
I'm not a hydrology expert, and I'm not a septic expert, but I think something like that would be a lot better.
What it boils down to as well is that none of us in here can make the decision whether or not these lots are going to perk or whether we're going to have wells. The final decision is with DHEC. I can't tell you whether it's going to do it. We pray that it's going to work. At the end of the day, that is their decision.
I'll say this. I think if you want to develop in Edgfield County going forward, it would be in your best interest probably to think about the people that's going to be buying these houses in your development and making sure that you're putting things in place that are going to be good long-term. I think right now you're looking at short-term, and how many houses can I fit on this property? And I understand that because you've got to make money, but I think you need to be, as a responsible developer, I think there's other things here that need to be looked at.
And, uh, I don't know, I know, uh, if for the water situation, you might, I don't know what, how, what DHEC, how they, you know, but they do approve systems where you got community wells. You got to be, you know, you got a big well and big pumps, and they're expensive, but, you know, I mean, you can look in it, but I think you need to do some more research and see what you're busy.
Yeah, I think we just have an incomplete.
Incomplete, right, right.
Project here that just needs more details before it can move forward.
All right, so along with, what details are you looking for? So I know I can come back and present.
Well, we want to look for possibly a traffic study. We have a lot of developers that come in. They bring a traffic study. You need to have some answers around, um, the septic systems. The, we already know the lots are too small, so come in and propose new larger lots and your plan for how this is, you know, not going to negatively impact the residents in your community that you're building or the residents surrounding the community. And then I think Mr. Burke brings a good point, um, to, you know, bringing in what Aiken County is going to require as well. Bring in some comments from there.
We follow this up continuously. Get a motion on that.
Okay, so.
If, if I may, the automatic approval for this application for the state law would be May tenth. That is before our next scheduled Planning Commission meeting. If the commission's interested in continuing it to allow the developer to come back with additional materials and a modified plan, uh, you would need agreement with the developer to extend that automatic approval date.
Would that, would that be agreeable, because not, we're going to deny it? You found with, extending, okay. So make a motion to.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to con.
Now, this is going to be priority, so I can submit next month before we go through not including this moratorium.
This, this would be the same application, so you would not.
You're not reapplying. We're just continuing it to give you time to, to get some more details.
You come back and make me with the details, right, okay. So you give me a motion or?
Can I make a rec, can I make a comment before you make your motion? I'm kind of following up Brett here, but if you haven't had a chance to talk to these residents, I'd recommend that you proactively do that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue this based on the fact that the developer has agreed to extend the automatic approval date. So we'll table this until next month's meeting.
Got to get a second? Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Poses, I'd have it.
Mr. Thinkben?
Plan development of application on Harret Place, public ID one six three, double out, double out, double out one, triple out, Edgfield County, and we enrolled by Conwell and Company Corporation.
We have a public hearing on that. We have any comment, anyone here for a public hearing on this particular? You got another sheet back there, Kevin? Okay, sir, you, come on up, state your name.
Good evening. My name is Michael Newton, Jr. I live on twelve fifty-six Askaga Lake Road. Um, I'm here on behalf of my mother-in-law, Mrs. Annie Ruth Williams, and my deceased father-in-law, Mr. Henry Williams, Jr., who reside at seventy-two Williams Road. And our family is deeply concerned about the project. We are concerned because for multiple generations on Williams Road, we have had family gatherings, community celebrations, and the proposed exit slash entrance coming out of the subdivision goes directly onto a road that is frequently frequented. goes directly onto a road that is frequently frequented by the senior members of our community, people who are sixty-five plus. I wanna applaud this team right here because they stayed. I believe that developers should be required to stay if their projects are being discussed. These guys, they spoke with me because we couldn't even see, the senior members of the community could not even see on the PowerPoint presentation where there was gonna be an exit or not, okay? So I wanna applaud those guys. That's, secondly, it's great. I'm all for growth. I grew up in Key West, Florida, then I moved to Columbia County. Now I live in Aiken County and we're gonna retire in Edgefield County. But growth has to be strategic and it has to take in the consideration of the heritage of the community. Profit's great, I've been in business since I was fourteen years old. You make a profit, but you gotta be in partnership with the community that you're there to serve. Bottom line. It's great that all those things are coming, we applaud that. We need jobs in our community, we need parks, but to, and, and, and what the gentleman told me is they said, this is a requirement from the county to have that entrance and that exit onto a thoroughfare that is frequented by senior citizens. So I, I appreciate you guys' time. I'm not from this community, I married into this community, okay? I married into the Williams family. My wife was a Williams. I love this community. I'm a member of Mount Canaan and we need growth. But just like a Dollar General was put across from a church that sells alcohol beverages on Sundays with no consideration to what that's doing to the community, we have to make sure that every step we take in developing our community, because we don't wanna be like Columbia County where people are leaving in droves because it wasn't planned out. So I agree with, with what the gentlemen are doing. I think we need to have a little bit more community input on whether or not we have a road, an exit directly into a road where people in their seventies and their eighties are driving back and forth on a daily basis. Appreciate you guys, appreciate what all y'all do, keep up the good work, and let's make sure we're strategic in our growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Dave Willis. Probably the new kid on the block on Williams Road. My wife and I, although Judy was born on this property, we have only lived here for thirty-six years. Everybody else on the road, with one exception, has been there for multiple generations, and we strongly disapprove of the entrance from Heritage Place onto Williams Road for the following reasons. We think that that would be an unsafe way for kids who are gonna be playing in the area, because Williams Road is, if you think of Rainbow Falls, Rainbow Falls Road as a secondary road, Williams Road is a tertiary road. The road is unmarked, there is no shoulder on either side, and it, it really was made to very minimal engineering standards when it was paved. Also, it's hard to understand during the first few phases of development why anybody would even use that entrance on, onto, for ingress or egress of that new subdivision. And if you, if you look at the map, Mr. Singletary, if you, if you could pull up the proposed map, during phase one, phase two, phase three, people would have to go out of their way to go up to Williams Road and then back. We think that if, it would be much safer if people could enter and exit if they need a second one directly onto Highway twenty-five.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Well, secondly.
Oh.
I've got a little bit more to say. I'm a retired hydrogeologist. I, I was an officer of a major multinational engineering company that had an office in Augusta. So I know a little bit about the geology of this area. And if you look on this map, I'll speak loud enough so everybody can hear this, okay? This stormwater retention area or detention area is actually on the highest point on this development. This doesn't make any sense. Water doesn't flow uphill. The property, the development will need a retention pond because there, there are problems with stormwater runoff right now. One of the, one of the people that own property down here is actively suing South Carolina Department of Transportation because they're not controlling their stormwater runoff. So a stormwater, what they call detention or what I call retention pond up here at the highest level of this property just doesn't make sense. Also, to let me teach you a little bit about the local geology, there's a clay unit underneath this property and it's about four or five feet underneath the land here. There's usually allum, alluvium on top of that clay unit. It's the top of what's called the Tobacco Road Formation. This clay unit has caused problems for developers for ages. The Walmart that's on I-20 had to replan things because the clay unit perches water, okay?
So we, we, all that good information, but for time lacking, you know, we appreciate what you said, right, yes, sir.
Okay, so just one more sentence. Stormwater retention into that clay unit will become a permanent pond. Okay.
But we, we appreciate what you said, so we take all this under consideration, we, good thoughts, yes, sir, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, you have any comments or anything? All right, now time, we time for our recommendation review on that now, the planning commission.
You know, regarding the retention, I'm sorry, are there others that are gonna speak?
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, yeah. Yes, sir.
That's probably the lowest point on the property. I think he's looking at it backwards. That's okay. That's the, one of the lowest parts of the property?
No, sir.
Okay.
Sir. We're, we're, we're talking, you have, we're listening to him.
Then we also have another stormwater detention pond in the front, which is the other blue area. So not all the stormwater from that, that site will go to that one point. And if it's wrong, I mean, we'll, we'll do a detailed survey, but that's PIS thirty accurate stuff, so.
Yeah. You got somebody else back? All right, come on, let me get you.
Good evening. I'm Brittany Graham, and I represent Williams Road. I'm trying not to cry because I'm really upset. This, this is something that I did not know was going on, and I see that there's cyber. I live nearby, I live off of, near Aiken County, but my family is Williams. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not thrilled by this idea. My grandpa would not be thrilled with this idea because this is something that we all have parts of. We have acres that we wanna raise our kids on, and I don't want to come down the road and see my mom having to go through all this traffic, road noise, seeing the light pollution. I like going down the road when I come to see her house, and it's just, I can see all the stars and I can just look at all the animals that's there. That's not what we're gonna have here if they come in and build these subdivisions here. And just like another gentleman said, that this road we live on is where we wanna raise our children eventually, and we don't want to have a bunch of people running through our road that we don't know. And like Michael Newton said, there's a lot of older people that live on this road. I don't want to have to be worried about people speeding through our road and people that we don't know and on our road. And like my mom here, how many acres do you have? About ten acres here on this road. They have, our cousins here are represented all throughout this, this planning commission, this, this, uh, here. We do not want these people here. And they could build, it's like we, like we were talking about yesterday, there's other lots that we can build, and we need to be doing this in a smart way. I wanna be able to see my cousins and to hunt, if they wanna hunt, and the other people that wanna hunt on our land. They, I mean, this, this is, this is in particular, just something like we've said, like we've heard and said all this time, they're trying to make money because there's people coming for cyber. I worked at the Augusta Chamber of Commerce. I know that cyber, cyber is here. They're trying to make a point to bring these people here to have houses for, we haven't talked about education, how these people are gonna be, how they're gonna be housed, how they're gonna be able to get into the school system. I would, I graduated from Strom Thurmond High School. At that time, when I graduated in two thousand and six, the school was already over, overcrowded. That's why we built Fox Creek.
Man, my timing's up, I appreciate it, we appreciate it.
Well, I'm in, in proposing that we do not have these people here.
Ms. Kena, you want?
This is, this question, I mean, this concerning me because again, I'm back at my constituents and, and William Road is my constituents. I would like to ask the developer one question. Since, since the young guy you stated, read it, at the bottom backwards, I'm gonna try to look at it a little forward. Where are your entries? I'm looking at the same map. I see that you have only one entrance, and is that the little curve under phase one? Am I right? Really, okay, okay, off of twenty-five.
No, ma'am, you had to come down to William Road, right down there.
Okay.
That, that other one is not, you know, it just.
My name's David Banks. Okay. Okay, so Dave, if, if he, could you scroll the map down some, um, Kevin, at the very top? So I'm looking at the park playground. Would you have to cut through that to the townhouses?
Okay, the gray area in there is the road pattern.
Okay, that's road pattern, right, but up there at the very top, I see park playground, right? So if I come on down on the park playground, am I looking at townhouses?
Those are townhouses on the front.
Okay. So you, are you all planning on cutting the road through there?
In the townhouse portion, there will be a road.
So you gotta talk to the transportation, right? Get approved through transportation, Kevin?
These are both state roads, so yes, SC DOT approves the curb cut.
Yeah, we are planning, we are planning two access points, and then the major entrance will be off of, on Highway twenty-five. When you get this, this size of development, or really when you get over a hundred lots, you should have two entrances.
Okay.
It can be, that can be, that's for a more, just for two reasons. One of them is for emergency access, in case you can't get into one exit, you can get out. We have done subdivisions where we have only emergency access. My client is, is willing to do that if, if the planning department, which I have a feeling, you know, if they choose to allow us to make that just an emergency access, it'll be gated and make locks that emergency vehicles have on where they can get in and out, would not be used for pedestrian, for other people, would be happy to go that route. I mean, it, it's really just, you usually go, when you get to a hundred lots, you look for that second access just for emergency purposes.
Okay, then another question, the young fellow that just stated that, is it true that clay is under the stormwater?
There, there, there's clay under ninety percent of our area, I could say.
So, and that won't be a problem?
About five feet deep. With, these are, these are, these are stormwater detention ponds. We do not try to infiltrate water in the ground. We try to control it so it releases at the pre-develop rate, so something is downstream from it, we don't increase the flow rates at those things. We will, but then we also have to do some other stuff, de-hack loops we have to jump through, but we do not try to infiltrate stormwater into the ground, which clay is, clay would be a problem with that, and we do have problems. Usually we have to blow, we have to dig through that to get to the infiltration areas.
Because I think the ones that lives on William Road, I think they was more concerned about the one entrance. They didn't want you, I don't think they want no one to come in on William Road, then turn over to the development at all.
Well, I mean, we're, we're perfectly fine if, if the county is willing to do that. DOT is, they were hesitant on, actually, and they said, you know, we see where the county would want a second entrance, which I think most planners would want the second entrance. It's just good planning. Oh, we, we reserve a fifty-foot, if y'all decide to ever come back in and make that connection, we'll be happy to leave it there and, and put it just and gate it in for emergency access.
So Kevin, what is, what, I'm sorry, go ahead Brett.
So Kevin, is that something we could work into the conditions of the approval that we have that second entrance, but it's for emergency vehicles only?
The, the planning commission, the planning commission could approve, or rather recommend to county council that the development be approved with an emergency entrance and exit only be there at Williams Road.
Order, order, order. Okay, go ahead, Kevin.
As I stated, yeah, you could approve it under that condition as a planned development, absolutely, it'd be your recommendation to county council.
So it would only get used in fires or other things and they need to bring that along?
Emergencies only. How does that work? He said the emergency vehicles have a, like an electronic unlock system, I guess.
Well, actually, there's a box that you buy and it's, and I found this out for the same reason, for another subdivision, and they have a key that has a key in, this box has a key inside of it, but they have a key to get into that box, so it works with the locks, the lock to get in and out.
So Kevin, am I?
It'll be a gated entrance.
I think it's called a knock box or something like that.
Am I, am I right that we're at a concept plan? So we're here to basically, the general layout, the general spacing of the X, Ys, and Zs are basically what we're looking at today, right? So obviously, we've got engineering that would have to go on.
Correct.
I think the developers probably heard some comments from the residents, you know, from Williams Road. I don't know if there's even a possibility of going on the other, further up, twenty-five, perhaps having a, you know, just kind of a right in, right out kind of road, I don't know. That's not my call, that's the developer's call, but I think there's some things, just some tweaks that usually go through these types of, you know, plans to try to figure out that I think, you know, I think as a whole, I think it meets what we need, but I think there's some additional work for the residents' comments that need to be kind of addressed and then probably brought, so that's my, that's my two cents for it.
Yeah, yeah, Williams Road to me, I can tell you, if I was going home into that subdivision, because it is such a, you know, the road's not up to standard, I wouldn't wanna go on Williams Road to go into the subdivision, I'd take that main entrance every time. But I think if you worried about ingress or egress, you know, like you said, a second on twenty-five, I know there's no way to take a left, but everybody coming home from North Augusta would take that second entrance, you know, where that'd be more convenient. I think you would probably get more traffic going through that second entrance than you would people wanting to travel Williams Road into that other one. I mean, that's, that's just, maybe I'm shooting from the hip there, but.
But Williams Road was, Kevin, was necessary just for a second entrance? Is that just per the code that we have, that you'd need that second entrance?
In this instance, it's not subject to code as it's a planned development, so, you know, the planning commission can put any requirement in their recommendation, county council could approve it with any kind of recognition. As the engineer stated, once you get over a certain number of lots, from an emergency standpoint, you want to have at least a secondary entrance. I'll give you an example, if you have one of the first houses there on fire, or if there's a wreck right there on twenty-five, and you have a thousand vehicles of people who live in that development that then cannot get into their development, that backs traffic all the way up on Highway twenty-five. So folks who do live on Williams Road, they can't get home. That creates a major issue that then leads to further wrecks down the road. And from a planning standpoint, uh, if you create a development of that scale and do not account for those potentialities, um, you really have failed to recognize good planning practices in development.
Now, I just, looking at that entrance, I understand it being, uh, for Williams Road being an emergency entrance going in there, but the possibility of residents actually turning before to get in for a back entrance for the condition of that road? And then whether it would continue to put pressure on that road, it just, there, there's a very slim chance as a resident that I would turn there, I would go to the main entrance. So I think there's some additional kind of thought process that needs to go into that about what happens with Williams.
Well, comment? I, I agree on that too. I think, I think we can work it out. I think we, you can, I think we can work, we can work it out. But it is a, I like the plan, the way it is, except like the entry, we can work on that, I think.
And to be honest with you, you know, just, just looking at the plan from, you know, so you have it coming out, cause we probably just teased into the road there. If you're gonna have an emergency entrance, there's no need, you could actually go further up to the commercial parcel itself and just create kind of a, a slide-in entrance there and not even have to deal with that. So again, if it's gonna be an emergency in or out, it's gated, that's a simple way from just the commercial piece that's there that may or may not even be developed in the future to provide access for emergency vehicles or things of that nature. Which probably when the commercial gets developed, it probably would want that little back entrance anyway for what happens on there, so. But again, I don't see, uh, I, I think this is a hurdle that can be overcome proper, properly with the engineering. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve based off the proposed changes of, uh, emergency access to Williams Road only. And that, you know, developer is comfortable with, you know, the egress and ingresses for what we have, uh, going there, so. Motion to approve based on those conditions.
I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, can I get clarification on, um, that motion? Would that be a motion to approve the planned development with only that additional, um, aspect to County Council? Or any other recommendations that both the developer and staff agreed to?
Uh, you made some recommendations of what the, there was the staff recommendations, this, there was two that were, uh, called out that were, um, conditions of that. I personally am okay with three-inch caliper or a smaller, I mean, two, the trees are gonna grow and a smaller tree is gonna have a viable, more viable chance. And, you know, I would just be, you know, curious, be sure that you, you know, actually you can space trees too closely, believe it or not. So just, you know, uh, being sure that it's at a three-inch caliper. And as far as the front side being some sort of, you know, fiber cement or, I don't see that, you know, no one is gonna look directly into a house standing at the road. You know, keeping the same material in the house makes all sense, you're not changing out trades, you're not dealing with two different types of materials, it looks different. It, I think it calls out a different look of a house by changing the material on the front. So I'm, I'm fine with removing the two recommendations of, you know, that we change one to be just a three-inch caliper tree. And then removing that recommendation of the front, uh, the staff recommends language, vinyl signs not to be used on the front facade, I'm, I'm fine with it being used on the front facade of the houses.
Um, just for clarification, the developer would prefer a two-inch caliper?
And I, I'm okay with that.
Okay, and there was one other that the developer was not in agreement with staff, and that was the, the connectivity, so the, the, uh, absence of a lot somewhere on the northeastern side so that any future development could interconnect.
Other commissioners have comments on that?
I think the, I think it could create a hazard. I think if that was ever developed on the other side, you'd get people running sixty miles an hour, cutting through that neighborhood, right past the playground right there, taking a chance at running over a kid trying to get to the playground. I think, I think the, I think I'd leave it like it is.
I think if it was further down, perhaps midway, or even on the backside of the property where, you know, maybe the back road was gonna, and you had a slither property that gave you access going over to Beddoes, then I think it would make sense. But otherwise, I don't see the need for it, if you've got proper access coming into the development.
Okay. All right, you, you tell that Kevin.
Got a motion on the floor, what was it? I think they're making changes to the motion.
So.
We do.
Correct. Correct, so if you would like to amend the motion.
Make your motion, make a little motion.
Make that amendment of not requiring the, uh, holdout of the lot on the north side of the property for future access.
So.
Is that complete?
I'll, I'll make this simple for, for clarification.
Okay.
Um, per the staff recommendations, you're recommending that the motion be amended to include the staff recommendations excluding staff recommendation four, six, and seven. So that'd be the fourth bulletin, the sixth bulletin, and the seventh bulletin.
Yes, but that the recommendation is that the tree would be of a two-inch caliper.
Gotcha, okay.
And what of the second entrance, did we?
I think we mentioned about it trying to.
In his, in his original motion that it'd be an emergency.
Emergency entrance on Williams Road, be an emergency entrance, right?
And be, and try to get it closer, further up towards the commercial side of things, because if it's gonna be a true emergency, there's no need to create problems, you know, further down the end of development.
You're saying to take the second entrance towards the commercial?
Well, it changing number one to an emergency, but actually move it, slide it further up towards the commercial side. Because the commercial, if it ever gets developed, would probably want an entrance coming out to Williams Road just as for whatever traffic they may have, but there's no need for that to be there. I understand why, I understand why it's there, but it just, it needs to move itself further towards Highway twenty-five.
So you have a motion on the floor?
Right, well, there's a motion, there's, that's been seconded, there's amendment, there needs to be a second to the amendment.
Correct.
Then vote on the amendment and then vote on the motion.
Okay, that, that second on the amendment. Okay, all in favor of the amendment motion, raise your hand. Poses, I have it. Now we have the, uh.
Now in favor of the motion itself.
The motion of, we align them to. We passed that, uh, uh. We, we, you wanna add another motion now? Okay, we got it passed and we got a motion. And second one that we have in discussion, in discussion.
Uh, just, I hate to add to this, but the sec, I know the second interest is an emergency interest, so, uh, just for the sake of wasting time, in your scenario of a wreck where it's backed up, um, who unlocks that gate to?
So. So emergency first responders would have access to that, uh, gate if the type was used as he described, and they would be able to, uh, market and allow traffic backing up due to the emergency to travel through there.
And we end up with a plethora of, um, Williams going, whichever way, we didn't move.
For a certain amount of time during the emergency phase, but then otherwise reverse back to what you have with the main entrance.
All in favor of the motion on the floor? All in favor, raise your hand, poses, I have it, so. Okay, uh, send, uh, back in. That's a good, that's a good concept that we did, we got it. That we rode in the bad road, it go, we back in there. Going to, yeah, right, okay. All right, uh. We go to, uh, at this time, we go to, uh, from C to, uh, uh, addition to our amendment, to our agenda that we added on, LMO observation is what we're going to discuss now. The Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Following statement I'd like to make, and, uh, says, Mr. Chairman, I would like to submit the following observations to the Planning Commission, as many of you may also indeed share in them. Over the last several weeks and months, we have heard our fellow citizens' questions, concerns, and objections regarding the proposed land management ordinance, or what we call the LMO. Edgefield County citizen and Planning Commission concerns regarding the proposed LMO have ranged from minor text edits to holistic deletions and changes. Edgefield County is a beautiful county with deep, with a deep, rich heritage, vast natural resources, and an expansive agriculture and farming landscape. These treasure jewels warrant an approach as unique and beautiful as Edgefield County herself, and the proposed LMO is not that approach. However, we must recognize the critical importance of planning and connecting our development codes and ordinances to a vision of what we eventually want Edgefield County's future to look like. We cannot abandon Edgefield County's future by failing to plan for it. In my opinion, not having a plan is not an option. Even though the current Edgefield County comprehensive plan and current ordinance don't perfectly align, we will need to utilize them over the near future until a proper updated plan can be create, can be crafted. As neither our current county ordinance nor the proposed LMO are adequate to address Edgefield County's growth over the next many years. We recognize that Edgefield County is not the first county to undergo these types of growing pains. It would be wise to seek and search out community planning precedents that mirror our specific challenges and issues. And then appropriately apply these best practices and lessons learned to our planning efforts. We absolutely want to respect and protect property rights and to also encourage and incentivize smart growth, conserving, conserving beautiful places and rural ways of life. Lastly, I firmly believe the Planning Commission, Edgefield County staff, Edgefield County Council, and Edgefield County citizens together should commit to a focused effort in first setting forth our community's vision for the future. And then working to ensure growth and change are kept in keeping with our vision by simple incremental updates to our ordinance. An effort not done in haste, as it may take many months, but crafted by thoughtful, evidence-based solutions from successful precedent, precedents that mirror Edgefield County's rural landscape. Next, regarding the upcoming small group meetings, I propose the following agenda. The meeting should focus on listening to citizen input and neighborly kitchen table conversations between citizens, Planning Commission members, and staff about Edgefield County's future growth. Feedback on the proposed LMO language can be entertained, as it can inform the development of an appropriate, simpler, updated ordinance. But the focus of our gathering should be on Edgefield County herself and her envisioned future. Discussions should set the table, quote, "to formulate the specific goals for developing an appropriate ordinance for Edgefield County." Thoughts, concerns, lessons learned, and comparable precedents to Edgefield County should be presented and documented and shared among everyone. Finally, these LMO group, uh, these small group meetings, uh, should allow everyone who wishes to be part of them to participate, however many meetings it may take. Based on these observations and concerns, I'm making the following formal motion to the Planning Commission. The proposed LMO, as written, does not address the unique rural and agricultural aspects of our county. Second, the proposed LMO, as written, may contain certain pieces that can inform and provide assistance in developing an updated ordinance. However, as a body of work, it is the wrong course for Edgefield County. To that end, I'm making the motion that this proposed LMO be formally removed from consideration by the Planning Commission. And that our collective efforts, the Planning Commission, County Council, and citizens alike, focus on creating and developing a plan that rightly addresses the uniqueness of Edgefield County's heritage, resources, and rural landscape. That is my motion to the Planning Commission.
You get a second?
Second motion.
It had been motioned a second, the motion that was just made, in a discussion, in discussion. But my comment is, is, uh, in agreement with what had been said, uh, I think our basic problem is we got a misunderstanding, we need to break it down to the public. We not reach, we not retreating, we just redrawing to reassess and to basically get the issue down to a simpler understanding and understanding of the public before we move forward. But we not, we not abandoning it, we just, we, we not, we, we withdrawing temporarily to, to reassess the condition that we, and what we got in our LMOs and so forth to get it. So after we get a comment from the public and so forth, I think this is our best order to do instead of just going up against a brick wall, we gotta bag up and reassess. That's my opinion, so you want to say that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Todd, thanks, I know those were heartfelt words, and I completely agree. I do love Edgefield County, it's my home, uh, a lot of my friends and family are here. And a lot of what's been said tonight, uh, before this agenda item reflect the fact that we do, there, there is a better way, and we need a better way. And, um, I do think that the approach you're describing, the incremental approach, dealing with the current ordinance that's already on the books. Uh, as opposed to wholesale, um, applying the LMO and zoning countywide is a better approach. And, um, I think that this would provide the opportunity to explore some of those better ways that respect people and respect their ways of life. And I, I'm a big both-and person. I don't like either or, somebody's gonna win and somebody's gonna lose, that's usually unnecessary. That's usually not the only way, there's usually a both-and solution. And we've been looking at this relatively briefly, and I think all of us have concluded, I, I haven't looked at it, but I understand there's been a lot of comments on social media, but I didn't want to really pollute my mind with that. I wanted to focus on really thinking through the issue. And, um, I've gone to people that I, I know and trust and love and that have experience and integrity and asked their opinion. And there are a lot of people that do care and are thinking deeply about this and want to provide input and want to take good ideas from other places. We're not any other place, don't misunderstand me, I'm not saying that. But there are things that we share in common with other places that have been down this road before, and we can look at them and see, that's not something we want to do. And in some cases, we'll look at it and see, that is something we want to do. We want to be able to look at things together. I would encourage people to read the current ordinance if you haven't. That's what we're dealing with today, that's the, that's the plan that we have today. Like it or not, that's what we have. And let's start from there and understand what that is, those are the rules of the road. That's why we're struggling right now with what, what should happen over here on, off of Sunny Brook and Nicholson. There's very little in place to provide guidance as to what should happen in that location for these good people that were here earlier, very little. And so if we have a vision together about what should happen, then is the time to talk about, how do we make that happen in the simplest way? The most respectful way, the way that takes care of everybody involved in a, in a good neighbor sort of a fashion, that's still possible. So, that's, that's what I have to say.
I think, um, I agree. Todd, Joel, I agree with both of you. Um, you know, Joel, you said it, we do have a current ordinance, but I don't think a whole lot of, there, there, I don't think a lot of people know that. Um, you know, this draft LMO was supposed to be the better version of what we have now, but we, we definitely have some issues with the new draft that we have. You know, I think just the Southern Felk issue tonight shows that with our current ordinances, we have problems and we need better zoning in the county. Without the proper zoning in the county, Southern Felk can essentially go where they want to go, so, yes.
If I may, that would be the comprehensive plan, um, specifically not the ordinance. The ordinance identifies the zoning on those properties as rural residential, which doesn't allow industry, just for edification.
Okay, we have issues, comp plan, zoning, ordinance, I, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, but we got issues. Um, that is clear, and we need a better path forward. I agree with Mr. Burt, we are not, you know, this is just a, we need to take a step back. This, this LMO needs to go to the drawing board, back to the drawing board. Needs to be no time limit on it, we just need to dive in. Todd, I liked your kitchen table discussions, you know, the, the Edgefield County that I've seen, the. I've seen, the, uh, you know, uh, fighting, arguing, I'm, I'm with Mr. Presley, I'm not, I'm not on Facebook, I haven't seen any of the comments, but I have heard, you know, that's not the Edgefield County that I know, it's not the Edgefield County that I grew up in, um, we're a county full of good people, and I think we can all have kitchen table discussions and come up with solutions. We all know we've got a problem, we've just kind of been at odds on how to fix it, so I think now we just take this LMO, we toss it to the side, and we start building the document that Edgefield County needs, and we start with public input first, instead of public input last after the draft is made, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would just like to get understanding on what the motion would be, um, if this was a formal withdrawal of the draft as-is from a action standpoint, the way I understand that, that would be that the draft that's online, um, the items that are a part of it that have been put out and their stuff would be removed, and perhaps the Planning Commission would provide a statement of the, the path forward that the commission is taking, Andrew, does that sound?
I think so, because I think it also needs to be a recommendation to council, because there's going to be expense in terms of consultant, things like that, that have to be dealt with.
Yes.
Also, there's the effect of moratorium, even though it hasn't been put in effect, the clock's gonna be ticking when that moratorium goes into effect.
Right.
Yeah, my motion, uh, as it read, is that it is, um, it's being removed from consideration, and that being that there are probably pieces of this, I mean, you take the signage piece and things like that, you know, things that are, the definitions and all these different pieces, but this land use piece, the zoning piece, um, uh, you know, you read it, it just doesn't, it, it is not a forecasting vision for Edgefield County. We've already seen these issues come with the comp plan, you know, versus what is being presented in front of us, we, we've got kind of a whole buffet of different things going on. And essentially, just to make sure that people understand, we're, you know, we're not here to kind of start, you know, trying to take a scalpel to the current draft of the LMO, little things here, little things there, that looks good, this doesn't, yes, it can inform us, it can inform us what we don't want too, I mean, that's exactly what it's done. There probably are some pieces and parts of it that I think that makes sense, but I want to formally remove it from consideration as a whole, as a document as it sits. If there are pieces that come back, we will bring those back to the table to be considered in a, in a new, uh, in a new, at another time, when we finish with our small group meetings, when we finish with discussions and finish all the discussions that need to happen, um, it just, it doesn't need to be on the table at this point. My motion is to remove it from consideration.
We have a second, we have a second on said motion, so all in favor of said motion, raise your right hand, positive, eyes have it, we'll go from there.
Okay.
Before we move, before we move to the next agenda item, uh, Andrew, could you advise as to, with that motion being passed, does the Planning Commission need to take any action in notifying County Council?
The commission, yes, you really need to notify County Council, because they're the ones that, you made the recommendation to Council, but they're the ones that.
Right beside them.
They're the ones that hired the consultant.
So, this would be, if, if.
But County Council looks for us for the, the body of work that will be presented back to them for what we want to pass.
Yeah, so I think, I think what part, part of this is, and I'm not speaking for you, but I think what I hear you saying is, we're gonna continue working through a process, the task that we've been given, and what your motion is, is that you think the better path to accomplish what we've been given is to look at the comprehensive plan, to cast a better vision forward collectively together, and then address the ordinance, meaning the current ordinance versus the draft LMO, and determine what is the simplest route to get to, here's the county ordinance, and it might be taking pieces of the LMO, it might be editing the current ordinance, there will be an ordinance, and it's kind of parsing words to say whether it's the LMO or not the LMO, it's just simply, there will be an ordinance, there is an ordinance, we just don't think that the time to address editing the ordinance is prior to all of the conversations about what we're trying to accomplish, the vision.
I'm, I'm still viewing the motion as a recommendation to council.
Yes, yes.
So if, if, so if I may, Mr. Chairman, just to give a specific example, the contract that Edgefield County entered into with Robert Company, company identifies specific chapters within the current Edgefield County ordinance to be combined into a single document called a land management ordinance, that is what's contracted out. So I believe, if I'm understanding correctly, Andrew, this need, council needs to be notified of this from a memo, uh, to, uh, to the council, uh, stating that this is the direction the commission wants to go, and then council may have to take financial and contractual actions based on that.
Exactly, and then there's an effect on potential moratorium, because if the county's not doing anything, it's gonna be hard to say we need to have a moratorium. We have to show we're working forward to some end result.
No, I understand. And, and I think that is everybody's intention here, is to be working toward a result, but to acknowledge that it's gonna take as long as it takes, and it's a different path than maybe just editing the LMO.
It's clear that it's a recommendation to council.
Right, yes, yes. Very well.
So you get it, you're gonna get it typed up for, and I sign it, and it's in?
I will put together the memorandum, and I will give it to you, Chairman.
I think, I think we will essentially, we're starting from ground zero, correct? We're gonna take a look at the comprehensive plan, I mean, we identified tonight, there's an issue in the conference, comprehensive plan, we, we, we identified it that.
And there's others that have been.
Staff believes that there was a mistake made, um, you know, around the zoning there, around Southern Felk, so I, I would think, yes.
If, if I may, uh, Mr. Chairman, the, um, process of reviewing and updating the comprehensive plan while prescribed on a schedule per state law can constantly take place. I think, uh, appropriate first step, given the discussion and the, the motion we had passed tonight, would be for the Planning Commission, um, during the LMO small group meeting process, and the information that would be learned from that, and we'll be discussing that next on the agenda, uh, to look at potential changes and edits to the comprehensive plan to recommend to County Council to somewhat lay the path and be guiding for a new approach to a ordinance update.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, for, for the sake of the minutes, if, we could at least have.
Come up, come up to, uh, Mr. Bright, come up here to the, and I thank you.
I'm with the Bright, I'm with the Bright, I live right across from that project over there. Let me, I'll say something here now, I'll say something about it. Williams Road is on the incline, and I'm gonna prove it by the time I get to County Council, I'll shoot it with a gun, but you can't run water uphill, and there's at least seven suits against the state about water down there. I'm one of them, and they have already spent a million dollars on the Curry property right below that property, for runoff, runoff. Now, you're talking about lots, now I believe this county has something about rural lots, am I right, Askra? You heard, you've heard that before? Well, where did it go?
It should still be there.
For years, you couldn't, on, on a county road, on, on a dirt road that was county, you had to have two acre lot, and on a dirt road that wasn't a county road, you had to have a five acre lot, am I right?
Mr. Chairman, I can speak, I can speak to that specific regulation.
Go ahead, Kevin, you, you can speak to that.
So, that regulation is still there, so on a unpaved road, regardless of the zoning, the minimum lot size is two and a half acres. If that property is more than half a mile away from a road with at least 50 feet of right-of-way, it is five acres, however, there, it, within that same section of the ordinance, if they pave from the entrance of the development to the next closest paved road, they are then subject to either the minimum lot size of the zoning district or no minimum lot size of its unzoned property. Aiken County has that same regulation, they chose to do their access through Aiken County, and as a result, they have to pave from the entrance of the development, Sunnybrook, all the way to Dragon's Lair intersection, so because their access is not off of a dirt road within Edgefield County, they are subject to the minimum lot size requirements of that zoning district, not, uh, the section on lots within the current county ordinance.
I can tell you that this gentleman gonna have trouble with his water.
Well, we, we'll work on that, we, that's it, we gonna work on that, appreciate it. All right, uh, we got the most drama, next thing is our LMO small group meeting agenda draft you got, Kevin.
Yes, Commissioners, if you look in your packet on page 23, I put together a, a template sort of agenda that could be used as a guideline for the small group meetings. From it, and given the motion that we just had, uh, we may want to have some discussion amongst the Planning Commissioners of ways of possibly amending it. Secondary to that, um, I believe our new administrator, Roger Laduke, has spoken to the county councilors, and I was notified by him that the process that they believe that we will be taking, uh, for the LMO small groups would be to, uh, invite about 20 to 40 folks, um, from within each district meeting to attend, and splitting into separate groups where you have a staff member present, the commissioner would be there, the council would be there, possibly some large commissioners, um, and go through whatever agenda process we lay out, one of the things that they specifically identified is they would like the Planning Commission to put together questions that they would like to ask of county residents at these meetings to get feedback on. So I think we have two items that we can discuss related to this, one.
Do we need to even be having this small group discussion right now, or should we wait and to, and see what County Council does with the LMO now that it's with them and our recommendation?
I, I would say, let's, that's the discretion of the Commissioners in terms of, you know, this agenda item, what, what I would say, um, from my perspective is, we could put something together tonight that's agenda in line with the motion that we've passed on to council, that way we're not discussing it again next month, and if they tell us, no, don't do that, then.
You can expand the topic to the comprehensive plan.
Exactly. So, so that's, that's a great point, one of the things that we could, so I'll, I'll just, if you, if I may, the first item under the meeting goals that were to be identified and discussed was share input on the LMO draft, well, if it's the case that we are formally dismissing this draft, makes no sense to have that goal identified.
Well, to make a little correction on that, I mean, yeah, I understand what we're talking about, you, you could make corrections to the draft, but I think it's, it's not that you're going to use it as, you know, implementing it, but it, it's also an informative piece of saying, we didn't like this, well, why didn't you like it? That's part of that conversation that happens when you get into these small groups, so, you know, my, my piece about this was that, you know, we can, I'm more than welcome to entertain comments about the LMO draft, about what's sitting out there, but it was not these small groups basically trying to come up with all these different pieces of ammunition about doing this, that, and the other to it, to change it, it was that, you know, it needs to be, what I would say, I guess, a resource for us, of, this kind of works its dutton, but it's not on the table as being in document that we would move forward or pass on to County Council.
What about, now, now that we're sitting where we are now, what if we just crossed out the word LMO draft, and we don't have LMO draft small group meetings, what if we just call them, you know, I don't know, Edgefield County Vision Meetings with, with the public, Small Group Vision Meetings, and instead of, like you say, instead of, I mean, the LMO is essentially being taken off the table, what if we just meet with the citizens and have a roundtable discussion, what is your vision for Edgefield County, and what do you see with your community, your area that you live in, the road you live on, the neighborhood you live in, you know, what do you see there, and then we, and then we kind of compile what we've gotten from the small group meetings to start building the right zoning document.
If, if I may, I, I have two thoughts on that, I think, since a postcard went out, and it talks about the LMO draft, since all the items on the website say that, I think changing the name would be risky in terms of confusing people, um, just from a standpoint, it could also seem like a lack of transparency, so perhaps an idea would be to maybe one of the first quick conversations and discussions that staff and the Commissioners have with those present is, here's how we're modifying our, our path forward, and you could make that statement then, basically, this originally was scheduled to be an LMO small group meeting, um, what it's now morphing into is a discussion on just general land development, the comprehensive hand, comprehensive plan, and regulations ordinances in Edgefield County. We could take the list of people who have signed up, and we could also put together a statement that we could email to all of them, uh, because they provided us with their emails, so we, we could also do that.
And I, I think to Todd's point, people may have a, something they saw in the LMO draft that they didn't like, or they thought was a concern, it's good for them to bring that forward, let's factor that into thinking, because whatever the future ordinance ends up looking like, that input can be helpful, and they worked hard to read through it and find it, and it may be something that other people have caught, it may be not, but there's no reason for them not to bring that forward, and it becomes helpful in whatever the ordinance ends up looking like, and so it can entail that as well as, what do you want to see in the future of Edgefield County, does it look like this, does it look like this, what do we need to do with the comprehensive plan, do you have specific input, general input, all of that can be helpful.
Let, let, let me ask this, if I may, uh, looking at the draft agenda we have put together, uh, just for the sake of ease and being mindful of the time, is there anything specifically on this, uh, that you, the Commissioners feel like we could, could or should change? Because I, I do believe the identified meeting goals are somewhat in line with what the commission is describing.
Should we at least, to Joel's point, should we at least mention somewhere in here, like in share input on the LMO draft, should we put share input on the LMO draft and comprehensive plan, that way people feel welcome to bring the comp plan with them, if that's where their issue lies, and.
If, if you look at B, could we maybe just say, let's take all the items listed in B, and then change that to share input on all the things in B, and then answer questions on B?
That'd be a good idea, all right.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think C should fine, like any other thing.
Yeah, sorry, I overlooked that B, with the comprehensive, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am, come on, Kevin. Don't make it long, though.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, we spent two years almost going through this comprehensive plan, we met with the, with Mr. Ford on occasion after occasion after occasion. We had what we thought was a good plan, now there may, I think, some people have looked at it, and there's maybe a few things that need to be tweaked, and I think I've even heard, um, the planning department say that the comprehensive plan and the zoning just don't quite match, or they've got to. What if we go back to exactly what the comprehensive plan was March 2019, when you guys sent it to the council, before anything got changed?
If I may, County Council is currently considering, and had first reading on doing that.
Yeah, but they're only changing back a part, and as I looked at that the other day, the minutes, other things were changed, so I'm saying, what if we go right back to what that was, start from there, and go forward, at the same time, look at the, at the, um, LMO, the Land Management Plan, make it match, and at the same time, we're looking at, at all of it.
If I.
With, with the citizens, is what I'm saying.
Would, would you be willing to, because this is, we've talked about this several times before, and I, I think we can, anyways, would you be willing to mark up the comprehensive plan as it sits now, highlight, redline it, whatever, and, and send us a, a side-by-side comparison, say, here's what it is. Say, here's what it is now and here's what it was then and here's where I've made my notes of what changes were made. So we can be clear exactly.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know myself. I mean, because there were several things.
Oh, I recall there were two changes too, that's all.
Well, no, because a second reading, there were some changes. Something was in there and I can't remember. I'll have to look at, look at the minutes and see, but there was something in that second. But see, I didn't, I didn't realize that at the time, but only looking back at those minutes. Now, do you have what was sent 2019?
Yes, we have all, all saved documents, so we could probably find, what I would want to find more specifically is whatever changes council made because having two giant documents and saying, there's a change in there somewhere, find it's difficult. What I will say also, Chairman, is the, it's not the LMO that is in conflict with the current comprehensive plan. It's the current county ordinances that are in conflict with the comprehensive plan, just for clarification.
Yeah, that's why I was saying that we needed to go back to where it was because I think the planning staff already.
Even if the county council changed the comprehensive plan to as it was that the planning commission recommended, our current ordinances would still be in conflict.
Right, yeah, and that's what we've heard. I think we, because I think you even made this statement that there's, that it's flawed. You know, there, there's some flaws in that, but at least if we go back to that starting point and then we are looking at something that's more clean to look at and go forward. And then you make, because then you're going to have to look at the comprehensive plan and say, okay, planning staff, tell us what we got to fix. That's my recommendation. Let's go back to that because the citizens already spent two years working on that. It may not even be perfect, but we got close. It was heading in, okay, Mr. Ford made this statement when he first came during his presentation. He says, Edgefield County needs to focus on its uniqueness. And we were doing that and then all of a sudden, we've gone, we have development after development. I mean, I don't know how you guys even keep up with it.
But, Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to express concern about proceedings. This is an open public hearing item and I don't want to make it in case where if we don't give everyone an opportunity to come and speak, we wouldn't be fair. So I'm, I'm just concerned about the time.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, and I, that's just a recommendation.
Well, we, we appreciate the comment. Thank you. Okay. All right, back to where we were.
Well, the, the, prior to my motion, the outline of where we were headed with these small group meetings were focused on really the book, the LMO that sat in front of us. What are the additions, deletions, changes and all that? Our recommendation is basically to take this and table it. We can certainly look back to it and use it as a reference point. But this process for the small groups is larger than what this book entails. This, small group meetings are meant to effectively set the vision forward for Edgefield County. And I know the comp plan, I, I think the comp plan gets us maybe 80% there, but there's, there's a piece in here missing.
That's right.
That just doesn't capture what we need to capture that will inform the final ordinance that we will move forward with. It's just you have all these different zoning pieces and this, you know, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, don't get me wrong. But it was just the current draft that we were reviewing was, like I said, it wasn't a scalpel. It needed machetes and axes and things like that. They just, you know, it just, it was just not Edgefield County.
And Todd, I would say, not only are there some things that were wrong with it, probably as importantly, there's some things that are right that are missing from it. There's some better ways to do things that, you know, a lot of what was in the LMO could have been written in 1970.
Yeah.
And there, there are other ways to affect the vision that we want and we need to be looking at those. They're simpler, lighter touch.
Yeah, I, I think what happened tonight is, is, I was, you know, I think is, is good that we're backing up and going forward. At the same time, I think while this whole thing was going for the past two months, I did look at social media and what I did catch there was the same concerns, but I also did see a lot of misconceptions, misquotes, things that, you know, that we can use this time now to put it out there and we keep it in the frying pan until it's done. You know, you know, and the citizens that are worried about, well, you know, I can't have the mailbox I want. Well, we can address that now because we have time.
Are we still in a comment period or where are we?
We, we're in a comment period. We're right here on this goal, on our meeting goal, what we're trying to get, you know, agenda set up.
Okay, well, that's fine. Let's go.
So maybe, I'm not, I'm sorry for, maybe a commission on misconceptions. I don't know. Maybe we do need some different groups to, to attack or to, you know, try to show people that there's certain things that can happen that are okay, that, that isn't going to affect you adversely. You know, and if, if we keep getting blowback, then, you know, maybe we just recheck ourselves. I don't know, but, you know. But yeah, I think we do need a misconception campaign. I'm not, did I say that wrong? Sounded evil, didn't it?
I think you should lead it.
Yeah, a lot of misconceptions out there, you know, and you got to kind of ask them the best you can.
Kevin, is it something that you can revise and just send back out and we can basically post as far as where do we need to, do we need to come up with that agenda tonight for the small group?
What I was going to recommend is the county council was hoping to have the LMO small group meetings start before the next planning commission meeting was to occur towards the end of this month, maybe the start of next month, depending on, you know, getting venues established and such. If we could focus on just identifying specific changes to this for an agenda that is in line with the current perspect, perception of the planning commission for the motion that they're passing on to county council, I think that sets us up in a better situation for discussion. Here's the secondary issue to that. Those meetings were to also occur before county council meets next. And we don't really have direction from county council on the motion that we passed tonight to recommend to them, so.
So, I mean, unless somebody else sees some major issues with this meeting goal agenda, we're going to have kitchen table discussions anyways. What's the, what's the chances of us staying exactly on an agenda anyways? Can we not just approve this agenda and, and move on and use it? I don't know, we're that far off.
Yeah, we have the meetings anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we go ahead and.
I, I, I think the, the change that you mentioned, if all the commissioners are in agreement.
And I would say, to, in order to not overload it with LMO speak, you might be able to just combine D and E and just kind of, there you go. You've got a spot in there. If somebody has something they want to bring forward about the LMO, there we go. We can do that. But it doesn't become, you know, three or four agenda items.
I believe I would need a motion from the commission to make those changes.
I'll make a motion to combine C and D and.
No, what, D and E, what?
I'm sorry.
D and E.
D and E, D and E. And then basically what you proposed earlier, Kevin, is you'll kind of combine A and B, correct?
Taking the elements that are present in B and also adding them to A.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
That those be the agenda items.
Correct.
Yep.
I second it.
Motion is second. All in favor, said motion, raise your right hand. Poser, eyes have it. Okay, good. Let's see, we, that looks good. Let's see where we at now. That's about it, isn't it? Yeah, we don't have an exact session. No, I think I made enough comments for the night, but like I say, we, we gone for here. I appreciate everybody. Who want a card? That's the main thing. We don't want a card and that's important. So at this time, someone give me a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. Motion second, we're adjourned, right hand, please. All in favor. Go. Thank you. Appreciate you. Public comment.